Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30. Sandra?
Anton Elementary.
All right, we are going to start our meeting. It is actually 5:31 now since I've been talking. Good evening and thank you all for being here. We're going to call the meeting to order and then we will move to 1.2. Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by Anton Elementary. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the free and public liberty which stands one nation, I pray God, and to people with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, my word. Congratulations, Anton. You did a fabulous job and you put a smile on our face. All right, we will now move to 1.3, Approval of the Agenda.
Go move.
Second. It's okay, it's been moved in second. And there are, Dr. Minaris, are you?
Yes, we have a correction to Consent Item 14.12. In the Staff Analysis, I'll just read the whole portion. "To provide operating and management services for the District Sturgis Center for the Fine Arts, including booking of rentals and collection of rental fees on behalf of the district. This group manages all outside requests, security, auto-visual, et cetera, for the performances that are held at Sturgis." This next part is where we need to make the change. The amendment is necessary to extend the term of the agreement from January 1st, 2022, to January 31st, 2022, to allow the district time to work through transitioning this work to the district and to increase the contract amount by $11,533.32 for a cost not to exceed contract amount of $80,733.32. Approval July 20th, 2021, Item Number 10.6. All of the terms and conditions remain the same. And then finally, total cost for services not to exceed $80,733.32.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other corrections or read-ins, then we will go ahead and approve. All right, motion carried. Thank you. And now we're at 1.4, Inspirational Message, and that will be from Dr. Flores.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Madam President. I was thinking of Madam Secretary, the movie series. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here tonight, our final meeting of the year. For the inspiration tonight, I chose the poem, "The Miracle of Mourning" by Amanda Gorman. And there are copies of it. I don't know if you all got them, but there are copies of it. And we will listen to her give the poem. It's very inspiring.
Hi, I'm Amanda Gorman, and this is my poem, "The Miracle of Mourning." I thought I'd awaken to a world in mourning, heavy clouds crowding, a society storming. But there's something different on this golden morning, something magical in the sunlight, wide and warming. I see a dad with a stroller taking a jog across the street. A bright-eyed girl chases her dog, a grandma, on a porch, fingers her rosaries. She grins as her young neighbor brings her groceries while we might feel small, separate, and all alone. Our people have never been more closely tethered because the question isn't if we can weather this unknown, but how we will weather this unknown together. So, on this meaningful morn, we mourn and remend like light we can't be broken, even when we bend as one. We will defeat both despair and disease. We stand with healthcare heroes and all employees, with families, libraries, waiters, schools, artists, businesses, restaurants, and hospitals hit hardest. We ignite, not in the light, but in lack thereof. For it is in loss that we truly learn to love. In this chaos, we will discover clarity. In suffering, we must find solidarity for its or grief that gives us or gratitude, shows us how to find hope if we ever shall lose it. So ensure that this ache wasn't endured in vain. Do not ignore the pain. Give it purpose. Use it. Read children's books. Dance alone to DJ music. Know that this distance will make our hearts grow fonder from a wave of woes, or world will emerge stronger. We'll observe how the burdens braved by humankind are also the moments that make us humans kinds. Let each dawn find us courageous, brought closer, heating the lights before the fight is over. When this ends, we'll smile sweetly, finally seeing, in testing times, we became the best of beings.
I chose that poem because we have gone through a lot, all of us. And her words of that we can discover clarity in our suffering and that we must find solidarity, for it's our grief that gives us our gratitude and shows us how to find hope. I think in our community, we need to come together, and we have come together. And together, we can endure a lot. And we can also survive and support each other. And I especially want to give a shout out to all of our employees, our classified, our certificated, our administrators, our police. You have done enormous work. Our cabinet as well, fellow board members, and of course, our families, and ultimately because of our children. It is our children that we are here for. They are the ones that we're here for. They are the ones who will benefit from our collective decisions. And they are at our heart. They are in our hearts. And with that, for them to thrive, we have to make collective decisions together that will support them, that will benefit them, and us as well because we have to be healthy. We have to be physically and mentally healthy so that we can serve our children with love, with care, and with empathy as well. And later on, fellow board members, I'm going to propose, and I'll do it in my board comments, that we extend our COVID leave retroactively from October for our employees because we need to support them in terms of their, you know, getting well and in terms of, you know, staying home from their sickness. And other districts have done it. Moreno Valley, Redlands, and Harupa are just three that have extended the COVID leave retroactively to last October. And we can cover that, Mr. Sullins, with our Coronavirus III money since we have a Boku money there, 260 million, I think you said last time. So with that, thank you very much. And I just thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much. And now we will go to 2.0. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to mention that that was a great poem. She's done many great poems, Amanda Gorman. So I just want to thank you for sharing that because it does hit us regarding the right places since many of us, and there's many challenges many families are facing. So thank you for sharing that and our teachers are facing and across the board, every sector are facing. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, 2.0, Special Presentations and Recognition. We will start with the 2.1 Outstanding Awards. Hello, Ms. Ontiveros.
President Doughty Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, Board of Education members, Superintendent Irvin, and my fellow Cabinet members. Now is the time for us to present the Outstanding Awards. This evening, the Board of Education will honor students, parents, and staff from Serrano Middle School and San Bernardino High School. The Board recognizes outstanding students to build self-esteem and honor excellence in academics, athletics, fine arts, citizenship, and most improvement. The Board will also recognize outstanding parents and employees. This month, as with previous months, we've invited our honorees to receive their recognition items at their school instead of during this presentation. However, we did invite them to join us by watching YouTube, so we want to make sure that we celebrate them so that they can hear us. We'll also display photos of our outstanding students and employee award winners as the principals announce their awards. Besides keeping us as safe as possible, this change allows us to hear from our site leaders who will share all the special things about the people we're honoring from their schools. And so without further ado, I'd like to introduce Ms. Erin Freeman, who is the principal of Serrano Middle School, to tell us about her school's honorees.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am happy to be able to present Serrano's Outstanding Achievement Award winners to the Board, Superintendent, and the Cabinet. Please join me in recognizing 7th Grader Emily Chavez, who was nominated by her teacher Sarah Skiten and the Tiger Team. Emily demonstrates outstanding citizenship and academics at school. She is a straight A student. She sets a goal for herself and works for it. She is intrinsically motivated to be successful and is a leader in class. Emily wants to help others and is considering a career in the medical or legal fields. I want to thank Emily's mother, Alma Delia Chavez, for raising such a lovely young lady.
Congratulations.
They braved the rains and came out anyways. Our next outstanding student is 8th Grader Andrea Silva.
Is Emily back there?
Yes, Emily is here.
Oh, she's got to stand up. All right.
Congratulations, Emily. We're proud of you.
Cute kid. Our next outstanding student is 8th Grade Andrea Silva, who was nominated by her teacher, Owana Mate, and the Panthers team. Andrea is a responsible, respectful, and driven young woman. She exudes excellence and brilliance. When she's faced with a challenge, she doesn't give up and focuses on learning and succeeding. Andrea wants to study at CSUSB for an eventual career as a neonatal nurse or pediatrician. I'm sure Andrea's parents, Elia Solia Silva and Hovencia Perez, are very proud, as we are. And I want to add, she did an excellent job during distance learning. She stood above the rest and was extremely committed. So congratulations to Andrea.
Congratulations. Is she here or not?
Watching online. Our next honoree is Outstanding Parent Award winner Gina Alvarado. Gina is a partner in educating her children. She holds her 8th Grader Daniel accountable while also celebrating his successes. I am sure she does the same for her other child, Skylar. She participated in all of our Serrano events during distance learning and continues to be an active parent this year. She is a valued member of the School Site Council and provides much-needed feedback to make Serrano a functional, welcoming place for all stakeholders.
Congratulations.
Educational Assistant III, Yanda Yarborough, is my choice for the Outstanding Classified Employee Award. Rhonda works in the moderate-to-severe special day class. Her position presents many opportunities to positively impact students' lives, but also out-of-the-box challenges. Her patience, creativity, and resiliency helps her meet these challenges with optimism and compassion. She shows genuine concern for everyone around her and makes not only her classroom, but all of Serrano, a better place. Rhonda is an exceptional person, and we are very proud to have her.
Congratulations.
7th Grade Teacher Mary Murphy is a valued member of the Serrano Jaguar Team and Science Department. Mary exemplifies the parameters of trust by communicating honestly and effectively with all stakeholders. She has always gone above and beyond, but she's done so even more in this past year. She has provided mentorship to other teachers, assisted with grading and creating lesson plans, and volunteered to be a substitute during her conference period, all without being asked because she saw the staff and students needed her. And we've had a long-term vacancy this year, and she stepped up without question. She helped plan and has filled in those absences every single day and has made it so that those students have continued learning science all year. Thank you, Mary.
Congratulations.
And thank you, Superintendent, Superintendent Cabinet and Board for honoring the Serrano Middle School family.
Thank you for being here.
I want to thank Principal Freeman for her leadership in sharing the great things about her honorees. And I'd like now for us to turn to recognize honorees from San Bernardino High School. And to do that, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Antonette Gutierrez.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to thank the Board and Cabinet for allowing me to present our Outstanding Achievement Award winners this evening. I first nominated Senior Alyssa Rodeznas for being our Most Improved Scholar and showing natural leadership abilities. Alyssa has really stepped up this year, doing better academically now, better than ever. She also is part of our Public Safety Academy, and she has become really a leader of others. She helped facilitate our school's Great Shakeout Drill, helping organize her peers in the mock triage of patients, making SBHS one of the safest places if we experience a natural disaster. And that really is thanks to students like her who do the leadership and planning and implementation of all of our safety drills. Alyssa wants to attend the Navy, and everyone at SBHS is looking forward to the great things she'll achieve in the future. I'm sure her mother, Rosemarie Velardi, must be very proud of her, as well as her family. Alyssa Rodeznas.
Congratulations.
And I know she wanted to come hang out with me today. However, the rain probably deterred her. Right? Our next outstanding student is Senior Zion Moore. Zion is a young man who exemplifies the character that we want our scholars to demonstrate each and every day. Although he has struggled academically, he does not miss in not one day of class. He comes every single day without fail. And as we know, that's very difficult, especially in this trying time. He is an athlete. He also is a kind young man who looks out for others and treats them with respect and kindness. Zion hasn't decided on his career goals just yet, but I know he will continue to inspire hope in whatever he does and continues to support whomever he surrounds himself with. I would like to thank Zion's family and his mother, Latisha Levine, for raising such a wonderful son.
Congratulations.
So I would, next, I'm very proud to tell you about Rolofina Gamino, our Outstanding Parent Award winner. Romi, as she likes to be called, is an integral member of our school community. She is here this evening. She's probably here a lot of evenings because she dedicates herself not just to the school, but to the district. She's a member of the School Site Council, the English Learner Advisory Committee, and the WASC Parent Focus Groups. She volunteers for anything that can benefit the students. And everyone at SBHS appreciates all of the time and support she gives to Cardinal City. Amongst the many years that she has served our students and our school for a better learning environment for all students, parents like her make our jobs as educators easier. And I keep wanting to look because I love you, and she's back there.
Oh, congratulations.
She was going to make me try to translate up here, and I'm like, no, that's too much for this evening. Sandra Ferguson is our ASB bookkeeper. Since starting at SBHS, Sandra has maintained her professionalism amongst the sometimes chaos. She is grounded and reliable and always has a positive attitude. And she wants to do what's best for students and staff, which is a very, very amazing line when you're serving at a high school level and you interact with all levels. During COVID, she had the responsibility of returning all the money that we collected for events that had to be canceled. So for those of you that understand the enormity of that task, she handled the refunds very well and didn't have a single complaint. She truly cares about our community and is centered on service to others, which makes her such a great part of the Cardinal Team.
Congratulations.
And for our certificated, our program facilitator Suzanne Baruki has always been a dependable member of our staff. She supports a multitude of programs, writes our WASC reports, makes sure we meet the compliance requirements for everything she's involved in. So every office that has to have approval for everything, financially, SPSA, whatever it is, she does it, and she does it well. And we get a lot of compliments, and it's 100% due to her. Suzanne is a straight talker who isn't also afraid to let me know when I'm off track or the school needs to adjust so we can keep moving forward and supporting students. Despite all this, Suzanne is humble and also kind to everyone, which makes her well-liked and valued by her coworkers. And those are all the Outstanding Achievement Award winners from Cardinal City.
Congratulations to all of you.
I must to give one more loud round of applause to all of our outstanding award winners this evening. Thank you. Thank you all for making hope happen.
Thank you, Ms. Ontiveros. Are you done? Okay, I was just double-checking. All right, 2.2, Golden Bell Awards. Of course, you're still there.
Of course I am. So, yes, so once again, I want to recognize President Doughty Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, Board of Education members, Superintendent Irvin, and my fellow Cabinet members. It is my honor and privilege this evening to help SBCUSD acknowledge the award-winning work of two of our departments for their achievements earlier this month being recognized with Golden Bells at the California School Board Association meeting in San Diego. While many of us were there in San Diego to witness the presentations to our district, tonight, we want to share these prestigious awards with our community. So I'd like to invite President Doughty Rogers and Superintendent Irvin to come down here in front of the dais. We've put a couple of Xs here to keep you guys separated. If you would come down here now, we'd appreciate that. And if you would move down here, I want to... You come and move. There we go. Fantastic. Thank you. As you are moving into position, I'd like to share a little bit about what the Golden Bell Awards signify. For 42 years, the CSBA Golden Bell Awards has promoted excellence in education by recognizing outstanding programs and governance practices of school boards in school districts and county offices of education statewide. Winning programs represent best practices across California and signify that a district's board has created conditions that inspire and sustain exemplary programs. One Golden Bell is an honor for any district in California to receive, and this year, SBCUSD has earned two. We will first applaud our SBCUSD Special Education Department, led by Dr. Hawana Lundee, for bringing home one of these great honors. Dr. Lundee, please come forward with your Golden Bell.
Thank you. As I share a little bit about why your team received this recognition, our stellar Special Education Department was recognized for its Beyond Pathways Program, which provides job training to students with moderate and severe disabilities. Students who participate in the Beyond Pathways Program have opportunities to learn valuable life and work skills before the age of 24, which prepares them to succeed in the workforce. Thank you, Dr. Lundee, and our SBCUSD Special Education Program for making hope happen through the Beyond Pathways Program. And while we pose for this photo very quickly, I want to... Well, we'll pose for the photo first. There you go. Okay. Yes, Board, please stand. That would be wonderful. Oh, thank you all, and congratulations. Thank you, David. Next, we invite Dr. Marcus Funchess, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, to bring forward the Golden Bell earned by the SBCUSD Employee Development Team. I'd like to acknowledge Mary Pierce, Shanna Smith, Kristen Martin, and Sarah Batterse for this Golden Bell. This Golden Bell recognized the district's onboarding program. Onboarding provides an orientation to the district for new employees, which is personalized depending upon the individual's role and offers various opportunities for ongoing professional development and mentoring. This program has been a fundamental part of SBCUSD's successful efforts to empower its workforce. Congratulations to the SBCUSD Human Resource Department and its Employee Development Team. We'll take a photo. We could ask the Board to stand. Thank you. Thank you all for celebrating this meaningful achievement with us in SBCUSD and for demonstrating once again the quality of work that occurs here in San Bernardino. Including these two new awards, SBCUSD now has a total of 12 Golden Bell-winning programs. Congratulations to everyone who is part of this highest level of excellence. Thank you.
Congratulations again, and thank you so much. We had an opportunity to see it live and good to see it again. So thank you all. We are now going to move to 2.3, Resolution and Recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. I'll start to my left if Ms. Sabios, you will read.
Thank you, President Rogers. Good evening. So, whereas Martin Luther King Jr. was born January 15, 1929, and changed our nation forever through his leadership, service, and clarity of vision. And whereas Dr. King was the leading civil rights advocate of his time, spearheading the civil rights movement in the United States during the 1950s... spearheading the civil rights movement in the United States during the 1950s and 1960s, earning worldwide recognition as an eloquent and articulate spokesperson for equality and nonviolence; and whereas Dr. King helped organize the March on Washington during which he delivered his eloquent and moving "I Have a Dream" speech on August 28, 1963; and whereas Dr. King received the Nobel Peace Prize in 1964 for his work towards passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and for combating racial inequality through insistent use of civil disobedience and nonviolent resistance; and whereas Dr. King also helped organize the Montgomery Marches in 1965, which assisted advocacy for passage of the Voting Rights Act that year to guarantee all African-American citizens the right to vote; and whereas Dr. King paid the ultimate price when he was assassinated on April 4, 1968, and was posthumously awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom in 1977 by President Jimmy Carter; and whereas to remember the life, work, and dream of Dr. King, a national holiday was first observed on January 20, 1986, and was later declared to be officially observed annually on the third Monday in January; and whereas this national holiday honoring Dr. King and throughout the year, we celebrate his memory by performing acts of kindness through service to others. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District does hereby recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day on January 17, 2022, and encourages students, staff, and community members and all Americans to live out his teachings as we continue to work for the day when the dignity and humanity of every person is respected. Second.
It has been moved, and second, is there any other discussion? If not, let us vote. All right, motion carried. Thank you so much. We are now at 3.0 Annual Organization Meeting of the San Bernardino City Unified School District. And we are now at 3.1 Election of Officers and Assignment of Other Responsibilities. And as we move into this, I do want to take the time to say, as we are coming to the end of our year, as well as coming to the end of my term as your president, I want to say to everyone, it has been my distinct honor to lead such a great district. Not only just a great district, but a district in where I had my educational opportunity, where I am always a Cardinal, as you've heard me say. To come back and to be able to lead in such a capacity has been one of great honor during a time that was very difficult and is still very difficult as we face COVID, something that happened to us and not along with us, didn't ask us for permission. But I am grateful that we were able to come together and make wonderful decisions on behalf of every single one of you, from the students to the teachers to the educators that are doing all of the work, the facilities, every staff member in this district. I respect you so much for the work that you do, for without you, we would not be able to do this work. I did not go into teaching. I did not go into superintendency or none of those things. So I respect and I honor the work that you do. And it is also my prayer that we continue to do the things that we were all called to do to make this city a light, a beacon, of one of which many of us as students are still here, still pressing to make sure that we are number one. We won't stop until we are there. We are grateful for our superintendent. I am grateful for a superintendent that had the opportunity to come in with us during a challenging time. But here we are, and we're still pressing forward. So I encourage you to still let your light shine, continue to make sure you are that beacon, continue to work together, and continue to encourage each other. This is a difficult time as we go into the Christmas season, and many of us are challenged with things that we never thought would ever happen in our families. So let's continue to stay together, to pray together, and to remember, as I said before, we are in this together, and together, we can get all things done. So thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. And so 3.2 is where we have Board nominations will be made for the Board President for 2021. And then from there... Oh, Mr. Tillman, I'm sorry. I just saw your... And I'm seeing Dr. Flores.
I'm gonna make... Is it time for the nomination?
Yes, we are at 3.2.
About to nominate Dr. Scott Wyatt as President?
All right, we have a nomination. Dr. Scott Wyatt. Seconded. All right, second. And is there any discussion? I see it clear, so we will go ahead and formally vote on Dr. Scott Wyatt. And Karen, are you gonna actually pull... Okay. I've only did this a couple of times, and this is when we had the new system, so... It was Mr. Tillman and then Dr. Flores. All right, unanimous. And we are now... I am now going to relinquish my actual gavel, and I'm going to move over at this point. Be it resolved that the Board of Education elects Dr. Scott Wyatt to serve as a Board President for the ensuring year. Congratulations, sir. Yep. Well, I'm on my computer, so we'll switch it out. So we'll switch it out. Okay. All right, sir. Take it away.
Well, thank you, Madam President, and you'll always be Madam President to me, Dr. Doughty Rogers. First of all, just want to say thank you to my colleagues with your vote of confidence in me to be our next Board President. But first and foremost, I want to take the time to thank Madam President, Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers, for her last two years of service. As she mentioned earlier, it was unlike any years we could ever imagine during the COVID-19 pandemic. We've had to make many important decisions, as she said, most of them, which were first of their kind, and to ensure our students, staff, and community were always safe. Dr. Rogers, as she said earlier, also led us into hiring a new superintendent, which has been a huge endeavor. So thank you, Dr. Rogers, for your leadership over the last two years. Your unwavering efforts as our Board President are greatly appreciated and will not soon be forgotten. So thank you so much for your leadership. And we do have some acknowledgements for you. So let me start.
Oh, my goodness.
First, with some flowers, of course. And then also with the gavel of leadership, as we'll call it, for serving as the Board President. It says Gwen Doughty Rogers, and actually, Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers. So I don't know if we got this earlier, but we'll have to make sure. Maybe we can fix that. But an appreciation of your service as our Samuel Sealed Unified School District Board President, December 2019 through December 2021. And again, thank you again for your service.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Trying to make me cry. Stop it.
I could definitely say I know we've gone through a lot and cried through a lot together. And definitely, these last two years has been quite a bit of years of crying, so... All righty, well, I will go ahead and just make some brief comments, and then we'll move forward with our business. As Board President, I just want to say I intend on keeping safety first and foremost as we continue to navigate through living and working with COVID-19. Most importantly, I fully intend on creating greater coherence with our Board through clear communication transparency. As we've said in the past, we are better together, and our president just recently said that as well. And we need to work as a cohesive Board on supporting Superintendent Irvin, our staff, our students, our families, and our community so we can make hope happen for all of our students. It's also my goal to ensure we are respecting our Board policies, Board bylaws, each other, our superintendent, and our executive Cabinet members. We once used to say, when a Board, the superintendent, and our executive Cabinet worked together in a collaborative manner on unified goals, anything is possible. I still truly believe in that philosophy, and I will do my best to foster those relationships so we can accomplish our goals for our district and our community. Lastly, I will continue to work with my colleagues, Superintendent Irvin, and executive Cabinet on keeping our Board meetings as succinct as possible so we can complete our Board meetings in a timely manner. Thank you again for your trust in me to lead our school board as we continue to make hope happen in Samuel Sealed Unified School District. It'll be an honor. All righty, let's move on. Well, we got a couple of people chiming in, but let me go ahead and I think... Do we have comments, or is this moving on on our next board agenda item? All right, so...
No comment.
Okay, no comments. Very good. Thank you. All right, 3.3 Election of Board Vice President. I do see quite a few lights on, and I think Dr. Flores was first.
Yes, I'd like to...
And then Dr. Rosas Medina. Okay.
Yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Tillman, Danny Tillman, for Vice President.
And I'll second that with mine.
All right, Karen, we had a motion to nominate Mr. Tillman as Board Vice President, seconded by Ms. Rosas Medina. All right, and then... Dr. Hill?
Thank you. I just want you to know that my recommendation is that we follow protocol. We've just been working on protocols. No one recommend a change in how we do things, and I don't think we should at this day and at this hour. I think it's an embarrassment and an insult to Ms. Sabellas to say she's not ready for this position. She's as ready as the rest of us have been. I heard she hasn't been there long. Mike Gallow was in this position less than a year when he became Chair. So in the 10 years I've been on this Board, we just followed the same protocol. The next person in line gets the same experience the rest of us get. My other concern about this is... Why are we gonna have the fox watch the hen house? And this is what I'm seeing. And no disrespect for Mr. Tillman. He's provided us with a lot. But, you know, again, I'm very scared when we let that happen. The fox shouldn't be anywhere near the hen house right now. And my recommendation, we have not changed protocol, so let's please continue it the way it's been. And then, if we want to look at protocol again, we can. But my recommendation is for Ms. Sabellas to be Vice President. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Ms. Rosas Medina?
And I respect your Dr. Hill. I think through my experience, I have seen it differently. So I've never had Mr. Tillman as President, so maybe I experienced it differently from you have. So I thought, in my stance of how, since I've been on the Board, that he would, of course, be the next one. But I guess, looking at what you're seeing, I'm still gonna push for it, but we'll see what happens with the vote. No, I just basically said, I guess we'll see how the vote moves and move forward with it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rosas Medina. Dr. Doughty Rogers?
I just wanted to chime in as well and to say that we have to be mindful also of the rotation, you know, when a person will get in. I think another thing is that we really have not kind of established it on incoming or the VP. There is some statements in reference to the presidency outside of just it being a protocol. There is some state... But somehow, some way, we never really looked at the vice presidency. And to be honest, you could be on the hold for quite some time without there being some type of establishment. In the past, if we look, we will see that people rotated in for various reasons, but that was in the vice presidency. And so, again, to get the experience, me being considered, even after seven years, we're still, you know, newer Board Members. I don't know when you stop being a new Board Member. I don't know what constitute new or old, the date you start, or the knowledge that you have. But truly, it's important for us to all be able to get in rotation and be able to learn and be able to lead as well. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Doughty Rogers. Mr. Tillman?
And in the end, it's each Board Member's pleasure who becomes the Vice President. But the rotation is, I would be next in line for the vice presidency. And that's how, if you didn't do that, then you would have Board Members who are long-served and never get back in the rotation. And so I would be. But in the end, although this Board has practice on rotating in, it depends on the four votes. And if you don't get the four votes, you don't get in. There's a motion on the floor, and I'll live with it either way. I don't have a problem with it. I don't consider myself a fox, but I will live with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, and I don't know about the fox comment, but okay. Ms. Rosas Medina. I know we call men that a little bit older nowadays.
And I think, honestly, there is no set protocol with regards to rotation. So for us to be saying that we're violating it, there's none to say that. But I do recommend that after this vote, that we look into having a set protocol so that way, we don't have to get into the situation from people... This is what the protocol, this one's the protocol. And so that way, we kind of come together in that.
Thank you, Ms. Rosas Medina. Ms. Sabios?
Thank you, President Scott Wyatt. I just wanted to essentially comment on this, you know, kind of like rotation. Obviously, this is my second time experiencing this, I guess. It's my first year, but, you know, when I came into the first Board meeting, I came actually December 15, which is when this whole process began. And so I am still really new when it comes to this process because, like I said, it's my second, and my first Board meeting was this process. So I'm not entirely sure what the rotation means and what the rotation's all about. You know, I've seen some of the bylaws. I've seen Board policy when it comes to the President. It is a Board policy that the President will serve no more than two years, each year being one year at a time, being elected. In terms of the Vice President, there is no bylaws on that or Board policy on it either. I do understand that the Board had a previous practice, which was, you know, rotating. It is also my understanding that part of that process had been established because the Board Members that were on had been on for quite a while. So it was a way to rotate them and not have any one person be, you know, President or Vice President for two years. And so this is not the case anymore. There is a new Board Member. And, I mean, I would love to, you know, have the privilege to be able to step into that position and, you know, expand my knowledge. But either way, like Mr. Tillman said, at the end of the day, you know, the Board votes. So, yeah, I just wanted to kind of share and express that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to conclude by saying we have to do the best for our kids. We talk about everything up here but our kids. And that's why we ran. We ran for this school board so that we can do some things for 44,000 kids. We ran for this school board so that we can do some things for 44,000 kids. That doesn't seem to be the emphasis we're focusing on, we're focusing on. I, I think, and it's just my opinion, I'm gonna get you one way or the other. And I just want to say again, I support the recommendation of Ms. Sebelas.
Thank you, Dr. Hill, and we have a motion on the floor and a second for Mr. Tillman to be nominated as vice president. I recommend we take the vote at this time. Let me see, motion, looks like motion carries. 4-3 vote. Mr. Tillman, congratulations on being selected as next board vice president.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to working with you.
Are you coming over, Mr.?
Well, I guess he wants to move.
We, we do.
I recommend we move.
This is what we do.
Okay, well then we'll get a move on. Let's move. Oh, and while we're moving, it looks like Ms. Rozas Medina has a comment. Yes, Ms.?
I do want to move forward, though, with ensuring that we do have a, a protocol with that, if, or in the bylaws, that way, we, for any future elections, we do, are kind of more aware of what's gonna happen, so that way, we don't go through this. So just making sure that we do create one.
And thank you, Ms. Rozas Medina, I would agree on that, and I apologize, I thought we already had one, but we'll make it a little bit more detailed.
Karen, do we need to lock out, or what would you have us do? Because we're on our.
Dr. Flores?
I just, I just wanted to comment that since I've been on the board since 2008, there was unspoken, I guess, protocol, not protocols, but just respect for traditions, and that was one of the unwritten traditions. But I do agree with Ms. Medina that we probably need to look at it as a bylaw, because that's what the tradition had been. And I mean, I respected it in terms of, you know, how we, you know, acknowledged it and so forth. So that was the way, the way that I understood it anyway. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Flores.
And thank you to my fellow board members for your confidence in voting for me as vice president, I appreciate it. And, and to the board members who did, I, I can understand that, and I'm comfortable with board members using their right and their vote to voice their opinion. I think that's the reason why we were elected to the school board, so I hold no malice towards that. That's the, that's the way I use my vote, and I don't apologize for it. And, but it's the, I think the beautiful thing about our board is I know for a fact that each member cares about our students. And although we may disagree on what we think is best at times, in the end, I know when my fellow board member makes a decision, it's because they think they're doing what's best for our students, our parents, our community, and our district employees. And I won't defer from that, but that doesn't mean that we're gonna always agree all the time. There's a reason why there's an odd number of board members, because there're gonna be times when they don't all agree, and you can move forward. That's why you have seven board members and not six, so you can still accomplish things even when people don't agree. And with that, I've been on the board for 26 years, going on 27 years, and we've worked tirelessly to do what we thought is best for this district, and I will continue to do that. And with that, I'd like to say thank you again for your confidence.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Thank you, Mr. Tillman, really appreciate that. Alrighty, folks, we're gonna continue, oh.
I want, I want to nominate.
Oh, do I have to read that first, though?
Yes.
I think I have to read that first, alright. So, 3.4, appointment of board secretary and board assistant secretary. Be it resolved, the Board of Education appoints Superintendent Harry Doc Irvin to serve as board secretary and Karen Cunningham as board assistant secretary. Be it further resolved that the board secretary and assistant secretary be authorized to certify or attest to actions taken by the Board of Education whenever such certification or attestation is required for any purposes prescribed by Education Code Sections 35-250 and 35-036.
Still moved.
Dr. Flores has been moved and been seconded.
I have my light on, Mr. Tillman, so I was gonna second it.
Alright, Ms. Rozas Medina? We have buttons now, Mr. Tillman, so alright.
Your duties, Mr. Vice President.
So we have a, a motion and then a second on the floor by Dr. Flores and Ms. Abigail Rozas Medina. Let's vote. Thank you very much. 3.5, appointment of designated board representatives, and this is quite a list, folks, and so, usually we have this in hard copy, it's a little bit easier to see, but I'll, I'll make sure to write it down as we go along. The first one is County Committee on School District Organization. Myself, Scott Wyatt, have served as representative for the past two years, and then, I don't know if a board president appoints, but I think when we nominate or motion to nominate, is anybody, I think we ask if anybody's interested in that. I'll be more than happy to not do it anymore, I'll say that.
Which one are we looking at, the county? I'm sorry.
That is the County Committee on School District Organization. Really what happens there is that the County Committee on School District Organization meets once a year, and you're actually a voting member on that organization, and it is normally when we take a look at any type of district reorganization, and each county board supervisor also has a person that's on there as well. Is there anybody that's interested in doing that? Don't all jump at once.
You get to stay.
I guess I get to stay, but I'm trying to give it away, folks, if you, no, I'm just kidding. I'll be more than happy to continue if no one, oh, Dr. Rogers?
Just chiming in for the clarity that, you know, I'm on until 2023 is when mine expires.
Oh, you're on that as well?
Are you on, are you at the top?
No, we're still on the top one, we gotta finish that one. So you're not, are you?
No.
Thank you, Dr. Doughty Rogers, I really do.
That's the one that you've been on, and you've done well.
I know, so, alrighty, in that case, since nobody's volunteering, I will be more than happy to continue in that position. Thank you. Alright, next one. CSBA Delegate Assembly. Based on District ADA, the board is entitled to two representatives. Current delegates are Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers and myself. The position held by Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers will expire March 31st, 2023. The position held by myself will expire March 31st, 2022, and a new appointment is required. I've been a delegate for two years. Board president appoints so-and-so. Is anybody there interested in being on the board delegate assembly? And that is for the state.
I nominate you again for delegate assembly.
Thank you. Wow, alright, I see how this is gonna work out. No, alright, folks, well, I will formally accept, thank you. The last two years has been kind of a blur, and I am hopeful with Dr. Doughty Rogers and Dr. Hill that we will continue to represent our district at the state level on hopefully getting policies and procedures passed that benefit all students. I appreciate that. Alrighty, moving forward. The Education Bridge Committee was formed by Samuel City. Currently, the city's not holding meetings, I will emphasize that, we'd be more than happy to. Current representatives are Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers, Dr. Scott Wyatt, and Abigail Rozas Medina. If the committee resumes meeting in 2022, board president appoints, and I will be, again, happy to remove myself from that committee. Is anybody else interested? I don't know who was first, so, Mr. Tillman's on his phone, he's not paying attention, so, just kidding. You have to clear it there, and then now it's cleared, you're gonna have to turn your lights on again, because Mr. Tillman wiped you out. Alright, Dr. Doughty Rogers?
Mine remaining on the committee, I know we have briefly spoke with them and told them, you know, requested that we started, so.
We have. Ms. Rozas Medina?
I'm also that if anybody's interested, maybe someone else may be interested, I'm willing to remove myself for those that want to be on it. If not, then I can continue staying on it, since we haven't met, but hopefully, like Ms. Dr. Rogers mentioned, that we would meet, hopefully.
Okay, is anybody else interested in the bridge committee? I will say this, folks, this, in my opinion, is a very important committee, so I hope we do start meeting. So we've said that if our, our local governments work together, hopefully we can move this city a little bit faster in the right direction, working as a team, so, that would be very nice. Alright, there are no others turning on their lights, so we will stay with the three current members on the bridge committee and look forward to meeting with our city representatives and politicians this coming year. Alright, Budget Subcommittee. Current representatives are Dr. Barbara Flores, I've served for the past five years, Dr. Scott Wyatt for the past three years, Mr. Danny Tillman for the past year, and Myra Sebelas as alternate for one year. Is there anybody that would like to step down from that committee, and would Ms. Sebelas like to be on there permanently, not an alternate? Ms. Sebelas?
Yeah, so if, if there's a vacancy, I would like to step up.
I will step down.
Alrighty, so, let me take a look at that. Dr. Flores, thank you for your five years of service on the budget committee. Ms. Sebelas, thank you for joining permanently on the budget committee. Is there anyone else interested that is not currently on? Oh, Mr. Tillman's volunteering me already. I'm Dr. Doughty Rogers. Alright, Mr. Tillman?
I would just want to say, if there is someone else who wants to be on the committee, I have no problem stepping down, allowing them to be on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. So is there anybody else that wishes to be on the budget subcommittee? Anyone that would like to be a alternate on the budget subcommittee? Ms. Rozas Medina? Alright, very good. So Ms. Rozas Medina will be the alternate on the budget subcommittee. Thank you very much. Alrighty, Charter School Subcommittee. Current representatives are Ms. Abigail Rozas Medina, Dr. Scott Wyatt, who both served for the past five years, and Myra Sebelas for the past year. Is there anyone interested on joining the Charter, Charter School Subcommittee? Alrighty, I don't see anybody volunteering. Is anybody that wants to be removed from the Charter School Subcommittee? Okay, we will remain with the same folks that are on there right now, thank you very much. Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee. Current representatives are Dr. Barbara Flores, Mr. Danny Tillman, who have both served for the past five years, and Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers for the past three years. Is there anybody that is interested in joining the Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee that is not currently on there? And I'll ask at the same time, is there anybody that is interested in stepping down?
To someone that wants to be on it, I don't mind.
Is there anybody that's interested in? Ms. Sebelas?
I, I have a, I guess, a clarifying question. In terms of how many committees you can be, you know, a part of, how does that work?
I believe that we'll be more than happy to have you on all of them, if you'd like.
Well, I don't want to be on all of them, but.
I do not believe there is a limit.
Okay, so, yeah, I would, I would like to join the Curriculum and Instruction Committee.
Alright, thank you very much for volunteering, Mr. Tillman, thank you for allowing Ms. Sebelas to join that committee. Alrighty, Facilities, and I want to make sure I'm not missing any. Facility Subcommittee. Current representatives are Dr. Scott Wyatt for the past five years, Ms. Abigail Rozas Medina for the past four years, Dr. Margaret Hill for one year, and Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers as alternate for one year. Is there anyone interested in joining the Facilities Subcommittee that is not currently on that committee? Alright, is there anyone interested in stepping down from the committee? Ms. Rozas Medina?
I may, if someone else may want to. I know, Ms. Doughty Rogers, you wanted to serve. Oh, well, I see that you're an alternate.
I'm an alternate, but, you know, if you, I can rotate in, I don't mind.
Yeah, and then if I can be the alternate, if you don't mind, so that way, I mean, there's still a couple of things that I want to push, but.
Alright, thank you, ladies. So Ms. Gwen, Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers will be now on the Subcommittee, and Ms. Abigail Rozas Medina will be the alternate. Thank you, ladies. Alright, IT Communications Subcommittee. Current representatives are Dr. Barbara Flores and Mr. Danny Tillman, have both served for the past five years, and Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers for one year. Is there anyone interested in serving on that committee or stepping down from that committee? Ms. Rozas Medina?
Oh, no, my light was already on.
Alrighty.
My light was already on.
Alright, looks like no changes there, we'll continue with the same members. Policy Subcommittee. Current representatives are Dr. Barbara Flores and Ms. Abigail Rozas Medina, have both served for the past five years, Dr. Margaret Hill for the past two years, and Ms. Myra Sebelas as alternate for one year. Is there anyone that is interested on serving on the Policy Subcommittee and/or stepping down? Dr. Margaret Hill?
Thank you so much, I'd like to step down from this committee, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Hill, and thank you for serving on the committee. Looks like Ms. Sebelas, I believe, is next. Oh, sorry if I missed somebody.
So if, if Dr. Hill's stepping down, and I, as the alternate, I think I'd like to step up.
Alrighty, Ms., I mean, Dr. Doughty Rogers?
And I don't mind stepping in as the alternate.
Okay, so, Ms. Myra Sebelas, you will be moving in as the full-time Policy Subcommittee Representative, and Dr. Doughty Rogers will be the alternate. Very good, thank you. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves all appointments, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Flores, and then, Mr. Tillman?
I just wanted to, just interject a couple, a little bit of history. When I was president of the board, I established all these board subcommittees so that we would get involved in all the, the different aspects of policy, budget, IT, curriculum, just to be part, so that we could, you know, a cabinet could help us understand, and then we would come back to the full board. So just, just a little bit of history.
Alrighty, thank you, well, thank you, Dr. Flores, for establishing these subcommittees, they are pretty amazing, and, you know, allows us to be educated more about what our district does and what our folks do for our district, as well as support them in their endeavors. Mr. Tillman? Okay, your light is not on, okay. Mr. Tillman's doing a wonderful job over here with his post-its of changing the names on there, thank you, Mr. Tillman. Alright, we're at that point, then, so be it resolved that the Board of Education approves all appointments to all the different subcommittees that are established, and I do appreciate all of you volunteering for these. As most of you know, it is a lot of additional work, folks, a lot of meetings, but it helps us move our district in the right direction, get the business done.
Still moved.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved by Dr. Flores and seconded by Dr. Doughty Rogers. We'll go ahead and take a vote if there are no more discussion. Alright, let's take it to a vote. Alright, it looks like it is approved, thank you very much. We'll move on now to 3.6. Annual Consideration and Adoption of Current District Policies. Let me get back here. Board Bylaw 19. Uh, 19. Let me get back here. Board Bylaw 19, 9310 states that the board shall review certain policies annually as required by Education Code 35160.5. If no revisions are deemed necessary, the minutes shall indicate that the review was conducted. Other policies shall be monitored and reviewed as specified in the policy itself, or as needed, to reflect changes in law or district circumstances. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts all existing board policies until revised or revoked by the board.
So moved.
Dr. Daddy Rogers, you had your light on?
I was just gonna move it. That's okay.
Alright.
You can turn me off.
Did you want to move, make the motion?
I think we got a motion and a second.
Alright, it was motioned by Mr. Tillman, seconded by Dr. Flores. Is that correct? Alrighty, let's vote. Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to 4.0. Organization on Annual Meeting of San Bernardino Schools Financing Corporation, 4.1. Alrighty, let me go ahead and read all this through. As required by the San Bernardino School Finance, Schools Financing Corporation bylaws, the Board of Directors of the Corporation shall have an annual meeting for the purpose of organization, selection of officers, and transaction of any other business. According to the bylaws, annual meetings shall be held immediately following the first organizational meeting of the year for the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education. It is appropriate at this time to recess as the Board of Education for the San Bernardino City Unified School District and convene as the Board of Directors for the San Bernardino Schools Financing Corporation. Do I move on to the next one? Okay.
You already called order. You already did 4.2, not 4.3.
Alrighty. Thank you for your patience. Learn a little bit here. Alright, Corporation President will acknowledge all Directors Present. Okay, the Corporation President will ask for nominations for the Corporation's President Vice President. A vote will be taken on all appointments as one selection. Be it resolved that Dr. Scott Wyatt be elected as Corporation's President. Be it also resolved that Mr. Danny Tillman be elected as Corporation's Vice President. Be it also resolved that Superintendent Harry Doc Irvin be appointed as the Corporation's Secretary Treasurer. Be it further resolved that Karen Cunningham be appointed as a Corporation's Assistant Secretary.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Tillman.
Second.
Oh, seconded by Dr. Flores. And we'll either use the lights on those, or we won't. Maybe on comment. We'll have to decide on that. Alright, it's been moved and properly seconded. Let's go ahead and vote. Alright, it's been unanimously accepted. We'll move on to 4.5, Public Comments. Public Comment under Session 4 may only pertain to the San Bernardino School Financing Corporation.
There are no comments.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. We'll move on to 4.6.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, it has been a move to adjourn and second. And I'll say after the Directors have voted to adjourn the meeting of the Board of Directors of San Bernardino School Financing Corporation, the regular meeting of the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District will reconvene. As we adjourn to closed session, recipients of the Shining Star Awards, oh, now we'll also do that, but let me go ahead and close this public meeting. Alright, before we go to closed session, as we adjourn, we'll be showing, I believe, a presentation on the... Oh, I was told that we have to reconvene first as the Board before we move on to closed session. So, I'll go ahead and open the meeting back to the regular Board Committee and reconvene. Alright, and then we'll move to 5.1, and we'll be moving to closed, is there any closed session public comments? Thank you, Ms. Cunningham.
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Okay, the first one is Ashley Alcala.
Welcome, President Alcala.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Superintendent Irvin, esteemed members of the Board and Cabinet. I'm Ashley B. De Salcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and I speak to you tonight on behalf of our 3,000 members. The District and SBTA have met at the negotiations table numerous times throughout the fall, and we have yet to come to an agreement. We acknowledge that the District is currently experiencing declining enrollment due to numerous factors. We acknowledge that the District has a structural deficit that we believe can be remedied, in part, with the change in budget priorities and a consideration of an early retirement incentive during this fiscal year offered to employees. The District has a funding balance that can more than cover our proposal, and with the increases we'll receive from the state next year, our proposal is fair and affordable. Our fight for a permanent salary increase is fair, respectable, and affordable. The question remains, does the District have the will to demonstrate value to our educators? Does the District have the will to retain educators who put our communities first during a global pandemic? Does the District have the will to illustrate respect for our educators who time and again put the District's interests ahead of their own? Does this District have the will to attract and reward educators who have chosen San Bernardino over districts we compare and compete with? Does the District have the will to respect our educators with a competitive ongoing salary raise, given the settlements of our comparison districts? SBTA has been a working, fair partner with SBCUSD for many years. Both parties have rewarded each other in our willingness to collaborate and execute shared goals. We hope that this partnership yields benefits with an ongoing permanent salary raise. Earlier in the meeting, I also heard it mentioned that there would be a discussion regarding the extension of COVID leave that expired in September. This is something very important to our bargaining unit, and we hope that the Board will consider this, as we know that it will help us keep our students and our staff safe if they do not have to worry about using their own sick leave instead of having a COVID leave provision as was afforded them until September. Our bargaining unit has worked diligently to help ensure the well-being of both our members and the District. It's only fair that we come to an agreement on these items so that we can continue to focus on the most important work in this District, which is our students and their learning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, President Alcala.
Okay, and our next speaker is E. Negretti.
Welcome, Ms. Negretti.
During the last board meeting, there was discussion about abolishment and funding for one position, which was for the HR Director of Classified. In the past years, it wasn't just held by one person. It was Sandra Rodriguez, Dr. Funches, at some point, your name was out there, but that's what we're aware of, and also Pervert Weissman, I mean Perry Weissman. So, three people carry that. For those of you who aren't new, and those of you who have no knowledge of how negotiations has worked for Classified, when they were doing their bargaining, it would be pages and pages of classified positions, and when it came down with the District going back and forward with Classified, who are your members who are out there, the front, the front runners, you know, you had someone here telling you there's more custodians needed to keep the schools clean, the children safe, the staff safe. And so, what would happen is, the school district would say, if it's vacant for more than one year, if it's vacant for two years, if it's been vacant for three years, it's an abolishment. Right away, it was off. So, when Dr. Funches had said, well, we'll do some abolishments and they'll find the funding, that's what you're talking about. They start cutting at the bottom of the line. You don't see abolishments of directors. You don't see abolishments of assistant directors. That's not what we see happening. Mr. Irvin, years ago, when Del Marsden came in, there was funding spent, or wasted, in other words, really, because it was wasted. There was funding for him to have some sort of looked into. What, where were the funds going? Was the money being spent well? And from that study, what was brought back was that it was top-heavy. Back then, there was no assistant of school police. That was created by Del Marsden, that the Assistant Chief of Police. There were, another thing that came back with that study was that there were too many assistant superintendents. And when that came back, he had promised he was going to abolish one. Well, he abolished one that a lot of people were going after, just because he wasn't supportive of one, one of the programs that was here, but instead was replaced by another assistant superintendent. I would encourage you, as our new leader for this school district, to go back and ask for that, ask for that study. What came of that? Because there's no point of really wasting funds again for that study when those results were there, but he didn't follow through. So, back again to Classified and the positions please look into, because Danny Tillman, thank you. You have been the voice of reasoning for looking at that, and when you said, yeah, the funding is in there, I don't know why some of you have missed it, because somebody said, well, the funding is there for that position. The funding is not there. Dr. Funches said it. There will be abolishments. We will fund that position, but that's what happens. They abolish classified positions. You will see abolishment of pages of positions, because that's what they say. Their reasoning is, if it's been vacant for three years, if it's been vacant for three years, it needs to be abolished. Well, shouldn't that same reasoning be used when they want to have an assistant director for human resources, Classified? Why not? If the other ones can carry, why can't it continue to carry on? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti.
That's it for closed session.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Well, then, at this time, we will adjourn to closed session and return after that. We do have, I believe, a slideshow that's gonna be shown. Is that correct, Ms. Cunningham? Alrighty, thank you very much. We'll adjourn to closed session.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our Shining Star Awards program. On behalf of the Board of Education and Superintendent Doc Irvin, we express our sincere gratitude to all of the dedicated guest teachers, substitute employees, and interns who work in the San Bernardino City Unified School District. Now more than ever, you are an important part of our district's mission to make hope happen for our students and our entire community. We truly appreciate your hard work and dedication and are pleased to honor you virtually. This year, we present the Board of Education's 2021 Shining Star Awards for exemplary service to nine individuals who represent the many outstanding guest employees in our district. We thank the leaders of our employee unions for helping us select such worthy honorees. We will start by presenting the Shining Star Award to our guest teachers, followed by our classified substitutes and interns. The first Shining Star Award goes to Judy Gier, Resident Guest Teacher, Marshall Elementary School. Judy has been a resident guest teacher in our district for more than a decade. She has been an essential part of Marshall's team of caring educators for several years. When the pandemic sent students into distance learning last year, Judy jumped into action. She checked out devices and hotspots so students could participate in class and made countless phone calls to families. Now that our schools are open for in-person instruction, Judy works directly with students, assessing their knowledge and learning gaps, so teachers can target their instruction to meet students' needs. Judy, we appreciate your efforts and present you with this Shining Star Award as a token of our gratitude. Next up is Darlene Rios, Resident Guest Teacher, Virtual Learning Academy. Darlene works with students who are learning remotely through the virtual academy that SBCUSD launched in August. She has been a positive force and has taken the challenges that come with starting a new program in stride. When families were understandably frustrated during the process of enrolling new students, Darlene always provided excellent customer service and patiently helped parents. As soon as students were enrolled, Darlene had lessons ready to get students back on track academically and socially. Many families have tried to convince her to become a permanent teacher, because they want Darlene to teach their children for years to come. Congratulations, Darlene, on your Shining Star Award, and thank you for dedicating yourself to helping our students learn and achieve. Our next guest teacher to be honored is Veronica Roman, Resident Guest Teacher, Hunt Elementary School. Veronica supports the educational mission and vision of the District with true positive passion. When she's not covering a classroom for a teacher who is absent, she works with small groups of students to provide instruction in math and language arts. Her calm and caring personality helps her connect with all students she works with. Veronica continually demonstrates a commitment to being a team player and positive role model for others. She stands out for being a problem solver, and like the shining star that she is, she helps Hunt Elementary shine bright by managing the school's social media, so families can stay connected to all the great things happening on campus. Congratulations, Veronica, on your award, and thank you for your commitment to our scholars. Our next Shining Star Award winner is Kristen Smith, Resident Guest Teacher at Cypress Elementary School. Kristen is described as a high-energy teacher who never backs down from a challenge. Always coming to work with a smile, she has supported the certificated and classified staff at Cypress Elementary with classroom coverage and student supervision since the first day of school. When asked to teach a fourth and fifth grade combination class, she welcomed the challenge without any hesitation and put her best foot forward. Kristen is enthusiastic and encourages scholars and peers to strive to be their best. When taking on a teacher vacancy or new project on campus, she does so with purpose and a commitment to get the job done. We salute Kristen's commitment with this Shining Star Award. Congratulations, Kristen, and thank you for teaching our students. Now it's time to honor the individuals who work as substitutes and interns in a variety of classified roles. The first Shining Star Award goes to Summer Clark, Intern, Communications Department. Communication with employees and families has never been more important than during the pandemic, and Summer's commitment to keeping information flowing has been an asset to the District. Summer has made it her mission to improve communication between SBCUSD and all its stakeholders. A college student who is working on her master's degree in communications, Summer has taken a special interest in generating messaging about COVID-19 protocols, which help boost confidence in all the District is doing to keep students and staff safe. Because of her knowledge of social media platforms and trends, she's working on a special project that includes creating a TikTok channel to promote the District to a larger audience that includes students. Summer has also written press releases to share the District's successes that have earned us positive news coverage. Thank you, Summer, and congratulations on your Shining Star Award. Our next Shining Star Award recipient is Stella Garcia, Substitute Cafeteria Worker, Nutrition Services. Stella has been a substitute cafeteria worker for about 17 years, helping in numerous roles to ensure that District students have nutritious meals to eat. Her service skills are excellent and allow her to shine at any site she is assigned. Stella is able to prioritize the needs of the kitchen to have everything ready for meal service at both breakfast and lunch in a timely manner each day. A team player, Stella can always be counted on to help others once her tasks are complete. We know that working as a substitute employee for almost two decades requires a true love for the job and for the students Stella serves. Thank you, Stella, for being a hope maker. We hope this Shining Star Award is a reminder that we appreciate your service to our students. Next up is Mariah Nicholson, Substitute Cafeteria Worker, Nutrition Services. Mariah is another longtime substitute employee in the Nutrition Services Department, having worked in this role for close to 20 years. She does a great job at any site she is assigned and takes satisfaction in seeing children eating healthy meals. Mariah is bilingual, and Spanish is her preferred language, which helps her communicate with more students. Mariah, thank you for serving our students with care and compassion. We hope you will stay with us for many more years. Congratulations on your Shining Star Award. Next up to receive the Shining Star Award is Claudette Powell, Substitute Cafeteria Worker, Nutrition Services. Claudette's colleagues can always rely on her to serve students with a smile. Our school cafeterias are busy places, and Claudette knows how to set priorities so she can help feed hundreds of hungry students. At the end of a long shift, Claudette takes pride in knowing that her hard work contributed to the success of our students. We appreciate Claudette's contributions and honor her with this Shining Star Award. Thank you for all you do, Claudette. And our final Shining Star Award winner is Haley Spargo, College Intern, Community Engagement. Haley is the ideal college intern. She is on time, communicates with her supervisor, works independently with efficiency and accuracy, and is a pleasure to have as a colleague. Haley is a quick worker and a go-getter, and is proactive and willing to volunteer and lend a hand wherever needed. She supports the educational mission and She supports the educational mission and vision of the district by her interactions with staff, students, and community members. Haley has a hunger for knowledge and is open to learning new things and sharing her knowledge with others. Her attention to detail and accuracy ensures students are awarded the millions of dollars in scholarships that they have earned. As a college student herself, she is also a positive and encouraging resource for our graduates. Haley, you are truly deserving of the Shining Star Award. Thank you for illuminating us with your positivity and radiant smile. Ladies and gentlemen, let's show our appreciation for the hard work of these guest teachers and substitute classified employees by giving them another SBCUSD round of applause.
All righty, folks, thank you for your patience, and we'll continue on. We're in section 6.0, Action Reporter from Closed Session. First one is 6.1. And that is approval of elementary principal, Cole Elementary. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee: Tamika Casey, Elementary Principal, Cole Elementary. Effective date, work, and year, salary to be determined. Funding zero three five. And is Ms. Casey here this evening?
Moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. We'll vote on it, so let's get our vote, and then we'll say congratulations.
Congratulations.
We'll say congratulations. Let's go ahead and vote. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All righty, congratulations, Ms. Casey, on your promotion to principal of Cole Elementary. Awesome. All right, 6.2, Approval of Elementary Principal, Del Rosa Elementary. The Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee: Carrie Bernstein, Elementary Principal, Del Rosa Elementary. Effective date, work, year, and salary to be determined. Funding source zero three five. Carrie, are you here this evening? Oh, there you are, all right. And I think I'm being premature again. All right, so we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all right. Motion by Mr. Tillman. I believe Ms. Sabios got that one in. Yes, she did. Let's go ahead and vote. All righty, massively approved. Now we could say congratulations, Carrie. Way to go. Moving on, 6.3. As it pops on in here. All right, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves settlement agreement claim number 548599, the amount of $80,000. The Board of Education authorizes Deborah Love, Director of Purchasing, to sign any related documents.
Moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded by Dr. Rogers. Let's vote. All righty, it's approved. Let's move on. 6.4. Oh, boy. Expulsion of Students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's finding of facts and recommendations and orders the expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board, rules, and regulations in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. All right, motion carries. 6.5, Students Recommended for Suspension or Expulsion Excluding Mandatory Offenses But Remanded to Youth Court for Other Means of Corrections.
Moved.
Oops, sorry, I got to read it real quick. Mr. Tillman, my screen is a little bit small. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of facts of positive youth development and orders the suspension or expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
Moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And properly seconded by Dr. Rogers. Any discussion? Let's vote. All right, motion carries. 6.6, Students Recommended for Expulsion But Terminated in Student Assertive Discipline Due to Completion of Youth Court, Availability of Other Means of Corrections, and/or Due Process Errors. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following students that recommended for expulsion, but expulsion was deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of corrections in compliance with the Education Code 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, the expulsion is not granted.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Dr. Flores. Any discussion? Let's vote. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 6.7, Other Closed Session Action. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to dismiss the following certificated employee from or his or her employment at the district, HR certified 202101ER.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded.
Give me one second, please.
Thank you. While we're waiting, any discussion? Ms. Abigail Rosas-Madina?
I just wanted to clarify. So, this is the first one that we... Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. But thank you for asking.
My board docs isn't working, so let me just do it. Yeah, thank you.
All right, we'll start to my left with Ms. Sabios.
Aye.
Aye for me.
All right, aye in for Ms. Sabios. Mr. Tillman, aye. Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Rosas-Madina? Dr. Glenn Daddy Rogers?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries. All right, we'll be moving on to Public Comments, 7.1. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the Board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, my first public comment is Alan Rice. If you're available, please come down.
Mr. Rice, welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board Members, Cabinet. I just got one question for y'all. When is enough enough? When is truly enough that we turn around and per our own agendas before the best interests for the children that we're elected to protect? We have policies through the Education Code, which, from my understanding, is you guys are to enforce, either from the Superintendent's Office down to the School Police Department. But yet, in this last couple of weeks, I've gotten nothing but closed doors, no answers. This is not an issue that's going to go away. In the matter that I'm speaking of, how can you, the Board, have no policies in place for any red flags? A student misses 23 days last school year. Okay, 19 of those are from November 1st until the end of the year. This school year alone, as of the 8th of last, of this month, that makes 18 days. But yet, there's no policies? What answers do our children have? We turn around and force them to do things. You have to do it. It's what is mandatory. It is the rules. It is the law. But where is your guys' accountability? I mean, I hate to kind of steal the thunder, but some of you guys, I come from a family of educational, not through San Bernardino School District, but through Colton District. My grandmother's name is on the bottom of the plaque at Ruth O'Harris Middle School. A name, whenever it went on, she was honored and she... It actually stood something. Now, the way that she has seen the school districts in California ran, you know, honestly, I don't think she would be offended if I turn around and took a grinder to it. I mean, I have my grandmother, who is a teacher. My ex-wife is a teacher. Hell, she left California in same credentials. $5 an hour pay grade. $5 an hour. What does that exactly say? We expect our children to be the future, the leaders, your guys' replacements. But yet, how are we supposed to turn around and energize them to do better when their own leaders? Let's face it. What do we have here? A larger salary between the members and everybody than most school teachers may combine? And they're the ones that turn around and influence our kids? You have teachers who are worried about, how are we going to do this? How are we going to pay this? But yet, almost everybody here sits pretty comfortable. Better yet, everyone on this cabinet sits comfortable financially. It's not our fault that you guys live above your means. But school, the teachers, the administration, those that are supposed to be the ones that influence the kids? Look at the statistics. Can you lie about those? I mean, any of it. The dropout rate. Not just between, you know, hey, this school, this school. No, I came back after stepping away for a year and having a real realization of it. Let's go ahead and set up breaking it down between this grade and this grade. Let's break it down to what race does San Bernardino School District just turn a blind eye to? I mean, if we want to go statistics, I guarantee you, you guys do not want it to be public. Why? Because you guys are not being held accountable, and that's honestly the problem with a lot of society, is those that are elected and those that are in position are not held accountable for their actions. We put you guys in said positions to turn around and be the... I guess it would be the middle person between the parents, between the staff, between anybody and everybody that has anything to do with the school district and our government system. What happens whenever a chain is broken is weak.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Cunningham. Mr. Rice, thank you.
Thank you for your guys' time. I'll see you guys next week.
I have a clarifying.
Clarifying question, Ms. Abigail Rosas-Madina?
Just really quickly with your clarifying, I know you...
Mr. Rice, we have a question for you, please.
Just to clarify, just to better understand what you were referring to in the beginning, you mentioned that there was no policy. I just want to make sure that I understand that is it because of stu... Right here. Is it because students were missing 28 days, as an example, and we didn't catch it and they were failing? Or because they were in a... So I just want to clarify what you're referring to, just to make sure that... I'm part of the policy committee, so that way we're able to identify what you're...
I'll go ahead and get a little bit more in depth on record. It is my 12-year-old son, who all mistimed is on his mother. The justice system doesn't care. The courts. He is in sixth grade. He turns 13... Oh, sorry, correction, seventh grade. He turns 13 in February. This issue started across the street. Why are we still having the same issue?
Well, is this more like where we're... Once we see that a student is missing several days, we have to make sure that we're reaching out to them.
Education codes are not being followed, which I've been informed in. I mean, if anybody wants to come in, let me know which direction and who I actually have an argument with, please.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, we'll get back with you. Can you give Mrs. Cunningham your contact information right here? Right here? Right over there?
Thank you, Mr. Rice. We appreciate that. Next public comment.
Next comment is Mrs. Negretti.
Welcome, Ms. Negretti.
If you don't mind, I will wait until 8.1. It's for 8.1. And it's the following item.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gredy.
Okay, Kelly Baso? Baso?
All right, welcome, Ms. Baso, if we said that right.
I would also like to reserve my time for the 8.1.
Yes, ma'am.
Agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the last one I have is Jenny Peterson.
Welcome, Ms. Peterson.
Did they get the copies of the San Bernardino Tirol Times? I put it in the box with the... Are the newspaper articles still there? Yes. So, good evening, Board Members. I come to you tonight with a gift from our school at SBHS. A newspaper. If I could ask you guys to turn to page four, for the article I take particular pride in about our campus, they let me know our kids, they have been watching us. Our conversations that have taken place here in this room, many have come up to me and said, "Thank you for being here, speaking up." As I've said before, we're short-staffed, classified positions. So we ask this Board to build the classified staff stronger so we can give our sites and students everything they deserve and show our community and the students that are watching, the true leaders you are. I did watch the last board meeting when you guys were talking about the budget. I don't claim to understand all that was said. I do know the word billion was mentioned. A thank you to Mr. Tillman for remembering the years of 2007, 2008. Because I remember them too. The pink slips that came out. We lost staff. We took furlough days to save jobs in the classified and certificated department, and they have never come back in 10-plus years. Let's bring those back before any more new positions are created for supervisors or any vacant positions that are left unfilled that pay over $100,000. any vacant positions that are left unfilled that pay over $100,000. Let's give our sites and students all that they are entitled to and deserve. We need to remember they are watching us. Let's be the example they want, that we want them to become. Thank you for your time. I hope you all enjoy the articles that the students at SBHS wrote, and you have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson, and definitely thank you for the paper. This is the first time I've seen it, and this is pretty, this is pretty cool. No, I love it. This is great.
All the kids, thank you.
This is from the students?
They asked me to bring it, so I did. And like I said, page four, the article is about our campus, so.
Great job by them. Great job by them.
That's the historical Tirol Times.
I'm surprised Ms. Dr. Dottie Rogers didn't say she started the paper.
No, they, this was very for me.
All right, no, great job. Thank you so much for this. We appreciate it. Ms. Cunningham? Very cool.
That's it for these public comments.
The rest are for 8.1 later on?
Yes.
All righty, we will go ahead and move forward. Sorry about that. Lo and behold, we're on 8.1. That worked out really well, so. I didn't see that. All right, do I have to read all that?
No.
No? Okay.
On the vaccine?
Yes.
No, this is just information there. The board?
The board had requested, a board member had requested that we put the vaccination mandate on the agenda, and then Dr. Funchess and the team and Dr. Rodriguez had some information here that just gives you an update on the governor's plans regarding the COVID-19 vaccination. So, again, Dr. Funchess and Dr. Rodriguez can ask, answer any questions you may have, but this is where we are as of right now.
All righty, and Mr. Tillman does have his light on. Mr. Tillman?
And I actually, I'll be agendized, because I think we should give as much information as possible, but I think it's critical for me just to be open up front. I said at the last meeting that our board hasn't done anything in terms of being aggressive about forcing people to do things over and above what the state has required, and some local districts have. And I think it's clear that we don't have any plans to do it. For me, just so you know, I'm just want, as a, my personal perspective, is that I got vaccinated, my mom got vaccinated, but I'm totally in support of people who have concerns. So, 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 so I, so I think it's important that we, as a district, find every way possible to ensure that folks aren't forced to do something that they don't want to do. I, I do believe, I even, I listened to the television the other night, was listening to Governor Newsom. Even he emphasized that there was going to be a place for, I think he called it personal exemption, so that, I'm assuming that people will have the leeway to say whether or not they want to get vaccinated and the reason why they want to opt out. And I just think that it's important for the board to confirm that we're going to support being, allowing people to make the decisions on their own as to the largest extent possible. With, and I think the law, even the way it is right now, is going in that direction. And I think, you know, that this board should give some credit, because we could have taken the direction that some of the surrounding districts have, and we didn't. Because for me, initially, I was thankful for the vaccine because I was willing to take the risk to take it, and a lot of our staff have also, but it offered protection for the people who wanted their protection. For the folks who aren't comfortable with it, then we support that also. But I just wanted to start that conversation and then get, allow it to be agendized so we can have a back-and-forth conversation. The hardest thing for me as a board member is to have folks talk during public comment, and because the item's not agendized, we can't respond. So, sometimes it gives the impression that we don't care, or we're aloof, or we don't agree with you, or we, sometimes we don't agree with you, but we can't say it, but we can have a back-and-forth conversation. By agendizing it, we're able to have that discussion. So, that's what I meant.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, and, you know, I'm glad that this was agendized for the very same reasons. And, you know, when this all first started, I remember you and I kind of disagreed, because I was the one that did not want to get vaccinated. And that was my own personal belief, and then in my own home, I have some family members that have underlying conditions, so it was quite an argument in my home, because I didn't want to get vaccinated and other family members did. So, I went and got vaccinated, you know, one because out of mostly their safety and their concern, and my colleagues up here all know, and I don't mind sharing it, but I came down with COVID after being vaccinated. And so, you know, it's hard to tell folks, say, hey, you need to get vaccinated, or we need to mandate vaccinations, and when you get vaccinated, you still end up getting it. And it impacted me very, in a very adverse way. I'm still recovering from it, put it that way. So, I'm definitely one who believes in freedom of choice. That is, that's what our country was founded on, first of all, okay? You know, some people may say, hey, you don't want to get vaccinated, and you die, you die, right? And people say, well, if you want to get vaccinated, you die, you die, because I know folks that have done both, okay? Who have died that didn't, were not vaccinated, I know folks that did get vaccinated, still died. So, what, it comes down for me, to me, is our ability and our freedom to be able to choose. And, you know, I see most of you out there wearing your masks, and some of you are a little bit reluctant still, and I get it. I don't want to wear my mask either. And matter of fact, as you know, the governor just said we got to start wearing them again indoor starting tomorrow. And again, I wear them in work and in our workplace here, because I want to make sure to protect others. I want to make sure I'm not a silent carrier, even though I have a disagreement with a lot of how that's been handled. And I know our board, though, really, number one, and I said this earlier, is we wanted to ensure the safety of our students, our community, and our staff. And a lot of these decisions we made were first decisions based on zero experience, based on hopefully the scientific data we were given, and trying to make the best decision we can. Well, at this point now, we're about two years in, there's a lot of data out there, a lot of our own personal experiences that we've seen and gone through ourselves, and you know, I stand behind the folks that want that freedom of choice. You know, the mandate, I will say this, if it, if it is enforced and it is the law, it's very unfortunate, because as board, we have to follow the law, whether we agree with it or not, right? We may not agree with it, but the law is the law. I will say that. Now, you know, I'm not trying to put any of us on the spot here or, you know, cause any other stressors, but I'm just going to always say, I support your choice and I support your freedom of choice. And where we go from there, you know, we'll see, but I'm glad we're having this discussion. And I really look forward to my colleagues' input as well. I look forward to your input too, because we need to hear it, okay? We really need to hear it. So, thank you for being here tonight. I know a lot of you, this is very important to you, and this is our opportunity to get to have an open discussion about it.
Dr. Flores?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I also share what my colleagues have just said, because we live in a democracy, and we should have the freedom of choice and, and exercise it. And I did get COVID before the vaccine was available. My entire family did. And so, you know, I was the one that had the worst, because I have respiratory conditions. And so, sometimes you see me doing my inhaler and so forth, but, but, because I had pneumonia, I've had, you know, throughout my life, I've had respiratory issues. But, you know, I believe that we have the right to choose. And, and like Dr. Wyatt said, you know, we do have to conform within parameters, but within those parameters, we are giving the leeway of choice. And so, I think that that's, that's the way, I think, the majority, I'm not speaking for all of my colleagues, but I'm adamant about that. I truly, truly am, because I would not want anything imposed on me. In fact, I would fight against it. And so, and every voice counts. Everyone has to live with their decisions, correct? And so, or die by our decisions. And so, so I stand with you, yeah.
Dr. Dottie Rogers?
Much. I think there's a delay on this. Let me pull it, because, okay, on yours, okay.
That was because Mr. Tillman was in that chair.
Yeah, like he did something to, he raked it over here for me. But, but I do, again, I think that's been the, just the sentiment of our board, even all the way back from when we had to experience what to do with COVID. But, you know, we can't ever steer away from, from choice. You know, we all have our homes, we all have our reasons. That's why I didn't often weigh in when individuals, I listened to them, and they told me what was best for them and did not impose. But also, over the last few weeks, and we went to a, to a conference, and we were able to experience some other board members and hear the challenges that they were having as well. And I, I believe I shared it with the superintendent, and then we need to get it out to the board, whereas, as legislators, oftentimes, we're looking, how do we connect with the legislators that is making those ultimate rules? And I think a lot of times, while we have heard the voices and we know that we need to make some sort of decision, but we also need to push those that are up there making the laws and, and speak with them and be that voice, because we're your local legislators, right? But there are some other legislators that we are in contact with and we need to talk to. And there is a letter that I had an opportunity to review and see that was very thorough and very detailed in the voice of the community. And I would ask Dr., or I would ask Doc Irvin if he would also share that information that I shared with him, that we received from our last conference that we were at, where they composed a letter, not only just from the community, but to the legislators that be, because we have great relationships with our local legislators here. I mean, we have our senator at hand, and every week on the phone calls and our assembly members, and we just need to activate those voices versus trying to figure out what can we do. Because as President Wyatt said, we can go so far, but they, their arms can stretch wide, and I'd like to see us do that and get the community involved in what they want to have said. Maybe it's the same information or similar or more, but if you would do that, that would be great, because then we can take your voices all the way up where we need to take them to. Thank you.
Sorry.
All righty.
I was choking on the candy that she gave us, but, you know, we do meet with our lobbyists weekly, so we'll, we'll continue to make sure that they know what our board thoughts are as we go forward, and then we'll continue to, I think, I think at some point, Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Funchess will come back with the board with clarity around the governor's mandates around this vaccination. But at the same time, we'll make sure that we give our legislative lobbyist the feedback that we're hearing this evening, if that's the sentiment of the board. But again, I think I agree that the law is the law, but we have to wait and see what that looks like. And, but, give us some time, I think, Marcus, how much, I don't think there's anything in place just yet, right?
At this time, Governor, as in, that mandate is not in place just yet.
Well, we definitely, since we meet with our legislative lobbyists every Monday, we have a direct, you know, link right to the governor's office, so we'll, we'll get that information out and we'll share that with Kevin and his team on Monday.
Mr. Superintendent Irvin, correct me if I'm not wrong, how many other districts have that kind of direct link? Do many districts have that direct link to the state legislature like we do on Mondays?
Uh, no.
All right, I just wanted the folks out there to know that, that we're very fortunate to have that.
Yeah, probably Los Angeles, LAUSD, I know, do, but I think we're probably the only one out of 1,000 districts, probably two or three.
So, when we say our voice is going to be heard and our district works directly with the state, we do work directly with the state, so. Miss, I agree, no, that definitely deserves an applause, because it gives us direct access to have that conversation, where, as you heard, most districts in this state do not. Ms. Rosales Medina, and then Ms. Sabios.
So, I, in somewhat cases, I do agree with our board members in the sense that, you know, for me, in the beginning, it also took me a while, because it was where you're nervous and you're not knowing what's, what really is out there and is, how my body's going to react to it, how my family's and so forth. So, I did end up getting vaccinated. It took me a while, but I know many of my family members also feel the same way, that they don't want to. And so, we have conversations all the time, and, and I do understand, you know, your viewpoint, because I hear it from my own family as well, my extended family. So, I'm here to support whatever our board decides and how we can help, you know, our communities here. But I understand how important it is for me personally, now that I am vaccinated, to be vaccinated, but at the end of the day, I do hear what you're saying, and I appreciate you coming and being here to address that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Ms. Sabios?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just kind of really want to echo what has already been said. I think that this is something that has been very, very difficult for each one of us. Individually, we've had to make our own choices, and some of us have decided to get vaccinated, some of us, you know, have chosen not to, some did it sooner, that, you know, some took a little longer, you know, whatever the case may be. It is really important for us to go through our own process of coming to terms to whether we want to do that or not. And so, you know, I share that, what has already been said, you know, a lot of, I personally am vaccinated. I was very hesitant as well at first, and I decided, you know, to go forward with it. A lot of my family members are not vaccinated, and probably two in my entire family. So, that's very telling, and, you know, I respect their decision not to get vaccinated. I get concerned for them, obviously, you know, I get scared for them, as I'm sure they did for me when I decided to get vaccinated. But, but again, it was my choice at the end of the day. And so, so, yeah, I just want to express that, and, and I do hear, recognize, and then also empathize. And we want to make sure that we are being taken into consideration when it comes to such important decisions as, you know, medical procedures, getting vaccinated and so forth, so.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. Any other comments from our board members before we have our public comments from our folks that are here? All righty, Ms. Cunningham, let's go ahead and revisit our guests that are here today to talk about 8.1. I will say, folks, we will keep you to a five-minute time limit, and if you are speaking as a group, it will be for 30 minutes as a group in person. Oh, Dr. Flores is going to engage before we get to you.
Just a clarification, so because it's agendized, can we have interaction with the?
No, still public comments.
I was, actually, I was wondering that myself.
Because, remember, when we have public comment and they say you can't address it, it's because the item's not agendized. This item is agendized.
So, this time says agendized, so we can ask, we can have a conversation. I'm just clarifying, because it's not public comment, it's a discussion and interchange. Okay, thank you.
There's this public comment, and they go by the public comment rules, but if they had a question for us, we could answer it.
Right, we can respond.
On the topic, because it's agenda.
But it has to be, has to be confined in a limited number of time.
But my only thing is we can.
Yeah, you can. Yeah, you can.
All right, members of the board and our public, real quick, we did have a couple online comments that Ms. Cunningham thought were for 8.1, but they are not. They're actually for public comment on the safety of the vaccine, not the vaccination itself. So, we're going to allow them to go first. So, we do have two public comments, and then after that, we will have the comments on 8.1, and we'll also be able to engage with you, which will be nice. We cannot engage on the public comments, the next two that are coming, so, thank you. All right, Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Okay, I want to call Valerie Leonardi. If you're available, please unmute.
Sorry, I couldn't click unmute. First of all, what I was writing about and hoping to speak about was talking about airborne mitigations, and I was talking about safety in that manner. I'm going to. I'm going to read a portion of Dr. Leonardi's letter. He, you can put back in 8.1 if you want to, so that you can ask him questions. What I'm speaking about is the dangers of the new variant that is coming, that is more infectious and that is spreading quickly and affecting children. And I'm going to read a portion of his letter here. My name is Anthony Leonardi, PhD. I'm a T-cell immunologist educated at Johns Hopkins 912 and did my PhD work in the National Cancer Institute on T-cell function dysfunction and immunity. I'm writing to guarantee an Omicron variant surge and spread in classrooms. Simply put, a new near-total convalescent sera antibody escape variant has emerged, causing rapid transmission over Delta. Head-to-head, it is transmitting five times more than Delta in South Africa and has by far the most mutations in any COVID-2 variant. In my opinion, kids who were affected before will be easily reinfected by Omicron. There is also no data to suggest Omicron infections will be less severe. It has put both vaccinated and unvaccinated people in hospitals. Vaccine companies are racing to create new vaccines for Omicron. In my opinion, our old vaccines won't work as well and will be significantly reduced in efficacy. In my opinion, there is no way to guarantee safe classrooms. So I am advising remote learning. In cases where this will not occur, there must be masking and air filtration with Corey Rosenthal boxes and ventilations at least of MRR 13 standard. Teachers will need at least N95 or better respirators, students at least N95 as well. Since N95 will be difficult to source for kids, at least surgical masks, but even these do not fully protect. Cloth masks are not enough. We are facing a dual Delta and Omicron winter surge. It has not been even two years and we have already seen a highly evolved variant emerge that very likely requires new vaccines. We need to think about our infrastructure and sustainability and how education is delivered. Catching SARS-CoV-2 every one to two years is not wise or just to expect of children. It is a virulent SARS virus, not a common cold, and has evolved to become more severe. Sincerely, Anthony Leonardi. And he submitted his phone number and email in order for people to contact him.
Thank you, Ms. Leonardi.
Okay, since she said that Dr. Leonardi could be in with the 8.1, I'm going to start with the blue slips.
All right. And folks, before we get started on public comment, I do have to say that, you know, even though we do respect your, your choice and a lot of your decisions, you do need to wear your mask while you're here in this meeting and wear it appropriately. We would appreciate that. And if not, then we're going to have to ask you to leave the meeting. Thank you. All right, Ms. Cunningham.
Okay, our first one is Melissa Bustamante.
Ms. Bustamante? Alrighty, thank you.
Okay, Joel Barrett, Barrett?
Welcome, Mr. Barrett.
How y'all doing tonight? So I'm Joel Barrett. Lived in San Bernardino for 47 years, third generation, married, two kids, grown in here. And so I've been working on the Union Civic Railroad for 28 years now. And because we have this federal mandate that has kicked in with the COVID, they're saying that if we're not fully vaccinated by January, that we don't have a job there anymore. And our choice is either to get the vaccination and work there, or don't get it and don't work there. So we've had a fellow member of ours, engineer of ours, who got the vaccination and he ended up getting extremely sick. He spent over three months in the hospital. And he was healthy before and then afterwards, pretty sick. So with that, though, it kind of put a scare into a lot of guys. So these are fellow conductors and engineers making over 100,000 a year. And so far, there's over 30% of them that are going to walk off the property in January. So listening to the board and everything you guys have done and everything that's going on, I don't understand or see how you guys could afford to lose 30% of these kids sitting in your seats in these schools and 30% of your staff. And that's if it's only 30%. Because just like all of you have said, you've had family members who got vaccinated. You've had family members who took the choice and didn't get vaccinated. So it's a concern of mine, being a taxpayer and living here for such a long time, that what is the board going to do? Where are you guys, where do you guys sit in this? Because we're a multi-billion dollar company. We're pretty big nationwide. Railroad's pretty big. So as you guys, as small, as our school district is, even though San Bernardino is a large school district, how could they foreshadow this? And what are you guys going to do to hopefully protect our schools, our students, and the parents to have the choice whether or not to vaccinate their kids or not? I know it's not mandated, but as you guys have said, it's not mandated yet. So if they do push it and that you, they do push the mandate, how are you guys going to deal with this? And how are you guys going to protect the parents and then the students and their choices, whether or not to get vaccinated or not? So you don't lose all those students. Because if you don't have students in your seats at your schools, there's no money. And that's how this has worked. I know it's a program and I know the state funds and the, there's, the United States, our federal funding comes from it. But the bottom line is, we need to have our students in our schools or they're going to homeschool. My boys have been homeschooled because we've had those choices. And I'm not for the vaccination. I'm not against it. All I'm saying is that this is something that you guys need to look at as a future that could possibly take place a lot sooner, especially if we start wearing masks indoors tomorrow. So I just want you guys to be aware of this, what's going on in my company and what could happen to you guys and our schools. So, thank you.
Definitely. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Just in case we have, just in case we have some questions for you, can you please stay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Tillman?
If you look at the timeline.
Yes.
The, the folks who have mandated early that you had to get vaccinated, like LA Unified.
Yep.
They backed off and said, no, they're going to extend it, right? And then the governor made some pronouncements. But I, like I said, I heard him talk two days ago and said that he's not going to get rid of the personal exemption. So I really think with, with, with time, then the options will be there. I think we would be forced to do stuff like that if this board, for some reason, became more aggressive than what the direction is right now. And so even the, the date that they talked about was next July. I think with time, it's going to benefit us. And that we, I don't, I don't foresee where we're going to be forced to do what you're saying other folks are doing it in terms of saying that you have to take the vaccine or else you won't have a job or you won't be able to come to school. I don't see that happening.
It would affect a lot of the teachers and a lot of the staff. And it would also, like I said, affect all the students and their homes, everything, if that was to take place.
It would.
So all I'm doing is I'm foreshadowing what could happen possibly in the future because it's happening at our multi-billion dollar company.
As happened to us, we're thankful. And, and hopefully we want to deal with the hypothetical.
And hopefully we can keep that. Well, for us, it's not hypothetical. It's reality.
I'm talking about for schools.
Yes, sir.
Addressing schools now. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick question. And did, on your job, did, did people begin or do they understand how to do the exemptions if they, is anyone?
Yes, and right now through the Union Civic Railroad, they're accepting no exemptions. The same one who got sick on that first shot, he has turned in a medical exemption from three of his doctors, two of them are specialists, and the railroad has turned it down, saying that through the federal government, they are mandated to wear no exceptions. So they've denied several religion exemptions and medical exemptions. They're taking no exceptions. You either get the shot and work there or you don't get the shot, you don't work there anymore. And like I said, 30%, that's a lot of people nationwide. And these guys are just walking off the property. They're like, you know what, I'm, I'm not going to risk my health for the job. So.
Thank you so much. And that's something for us to even add when we're talking to our legislators. Are they really following these exemptions that we're talking about even now? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. We appreciate your comments.
Okay, our next speaker is Roxanne Barrett.
Welcome, Mrs. Barrett. Welcome, Mrs. Barrett.
Hi, thank you for having me. Can I take?
Yes, you may.
Hi, my name's Roxanne Barrett. I come in support of all who are concerned for being mandated. I've been a teacher in Fontana Unified School District for seven years and then came home to homeschool my children for more than 12 years. As I've been contemplating going back to teaching, I will not return if I'm mandated to get the shot. And here's a few reasons why. I left the public school system as it failed my special needs child, my special needs child whom I believe had a vaccine injury that caused his disability. My child could not be taken care of by the school system nor protected, nor protect him from his bullies. There was too much class overload and he was getting his needs minimally met. So as a parent, I reserved my rights to choose what's best for my child and brought him home to school. This is an example of a parent's right who knows what's best for their child and their needs. He is now 21, drives, has a job, and goes to college. No district or government should ever be able to dictate what's right for our children and their health or future. Another reason you should consider not mandating is due to the fact that people are leaving schools and choosing to homeschool so they won't have to give up their right to choose what's best for their child. I am on the council of a PSP homeschool called Victor Valley Desert Christian School. Our attendance has increased from 30 families to 75 within this year. These are families from all walks of life and have come to, come out of school due to the fact that they don't want their rights to be taken away as parents and are able to choose what is best for their children. We no longer, as a school, can take any more families as we're full and are referring out to other PSP schools. Lastly, why aren't we considering antibodies as a choice of continual, or a choice of continual testing? Yes, let's please follow the science. Shots don't stop the transmission of the virus. I've witnessed countless of people in my community who have received the shots and they still were infected with the virus. Therefore, if people like me who got COVID in November 2020 of last year still have antibodies a year later, why would I even consider the shot? I've been exposed numerous times and I have not gotten COVID again. I'm not an anti-vaxer, but I do want to choose what's best for my family and teach them to be able to make wise, scientific decisions based off truth, not based off of fear or false information. I highly recommend you choose not to mandate or you will be seeing a lot of families leaving your schools. And in the end, your district will lose funding for forcing parents to choose. People's children and jobs should not be forced. It should be a right. I was able to make a choice for my son's future and will always fight for the rights of parents and teachers to choose for themselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Barrett. No, alrighty. Oh, wait, wait, Ms. Barrett, we're wrong.
I, I just wanted to clarify.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Thank you for sharing. Do you currently have students or do you have family members that attend our school districts? And is that something that they feel as well?
Do I have students where?
And here in the school district?
Um, no, not currently.
Or, or family members that have their children in the school district?
Yes.
Okay. Is that also some of the same sentiments that they feel as you as well? I'm, I'm just curious.
Yes, I have a lot of family members who want the choice, whether they want to choose to get it or not get it.
And the ones, but those are the ones that live within our school district, right?
Yes, but I'm also in San Bernardino County as well, as I've lived here. And I taught in Fontana and my child went to Redlands School District as well. So.
Okay, thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Righty, thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Andrea Schindler.
Welcome, Andrea.
I'm always a rec, so I'm really sorry. And you guys gave other things that you said. So I do have additional questions I want to ask for you to ask now that you're talking about talking to legislators. So hopefully I can speed through quickly and not be too much of a nervous rec like I always am. My name's Andrea Schindler. Thank you. Good evening, board members and cabinet. I'm a teacher, mother of six. This is my 20th year of teaching. And tonight I came here with a lot of questions, too many that would take all night long. But the first question I would ask, and I hope you would ask the legislators, is why isn't the CDC and the FDA using the VAERS system the way it was intended? Stated on the web, the VAERS system website, it says that they're supposed to be detecting new unusual or rare vaccine adverse events, monitor increases in known adverse events, assess the safety of newly licensed vaccines. So I'm questioning why, when they have five times the amount of myocardial reactions, why wouldn't we put a pause for a minute, right? When we're seeing an increase in neurological adverse reactions in adolescents, you saw parents talk last time, why wouldn't we be putting a pause instead of putting a mandate? That doesn't make sense to me. Secondly, I'm questioning why are we sending out misguided information to our county, to parents, through the county and through our healthcare providers? I got an email from our county and one of the things it says is that the vaccines for children are safe and effective. Well, I want to know what the definition of safe and effective is. I'm a mom. If you tell me that this vaccine is safe, that's telling me my child can't be injured. According, no offense to Dr. Lombardi, if I follow his logic, he says that you can recover from myocardial conditions, right? So my children, but long, not long haul symptoms. My children have already had COVID, so they're already doomed to have the long haul symptoms. So now I'm going to add a vaccine which could injure them, which is not going to keep them safe from COVID. So they're going to still get it again and have more long hauls, more, more long haul symptoms. And then I'm going to add a booster. And I think he said there's a pill too. And all of that is supposed to sound logical to me. And it doesn't. That sounds like a lot. And it sounds like a lot of experimentation. When they say effective, are they still talking about the fact that it creates immunity? Because as a parent, that would have been what I would have thought. But we already know it's not creating immunity. And so I'm wondering why, if this is the least affected population, if that's what the statistics have shown, why would we force that on our children? I just don't understand why. Another question I have is that the county says that this has been studied in 3,100 children. Now, we don't know if that's California or if that's the whole United States. But did you guys know that in the scientific community, that a general population study, that they, the scientific standard is 10%? But if we're taking the number of children in California, that would have reduced that study to point 0009 of the sample size in California. If that 3,100 was over the whole United States, that's point 0001 of the population. How is that a scientific study? I need help understanding these, the answers to these questions. I have so many more questions, more than we have time for here. But my biggest question of all is, why do we think that politicians and pharmaceutical companies should be driving our medical decisions? It's my firm belief that all medical decisions should be made with ethical doctors who are providing clear, honest information. And just so you guys know, I'm not an anti-vaxxer. I actually thought that I would have been vaccinated by the time that the school year started because I was going to be around my students. One thing I wanted to do first was to be able to donate my COVID plasma. That was a life-saving tool that saved my husband's best friend's life. And my best friend, when she went to go donate hers, was told that if it's COVID plasma that you're donating, that you couldn't be vaccinated. So that was a red flag to me. Another red flag was why my immunity was seen as less than a vaccine. I had chicken pox when I was a kid and we used to have chicken pox parties. So this just didn't quite add up. But I still felt like I would give it a try until just about everybody I knew who was vaccinated still got the virus. And I thought, I think we deserve better. I think we deserve something that if we can't have something that creates immunity, at least. I think we deserve something that if we can't have something that creates immunity, at least isn't causing injury. The most disheartening thing about coming back to school this year was after an incredibly emotionally stressful year, finding that our governor was instituting and proposing mandates that have drawn lines of division and dissent at a time when we desperately needed reunification and healing. In our past two board meetings, I've read language to you where you guys stood up against these, it was laws then, right? To protect our students. If you even have one small doubt or question, I ask that you please write a resolution in opposition to the mandate. That one small doubt or question may be one student and one student when it comes to vaccine injury is just too many. Thank you. And I have 16 seconds. I don't know if I could pull this out, but I actually have.
You're actually over, Ms. Schindler.
Am I over 16 seconds?
You're over, but thank you though.
Do you, do you mind if I, I've emailed you, I'm sorry, I'm your pest. But I didn't know that you would be willing to take questions to the legislators and I have a list. Not these.
I would recommend that you email those. And Mr. Irvin's going to have a comment, but I would say recommend them.
Okay, thank you. And they're not long like that, just really short, to the point questions, unlike when I normally talk, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're appreciated, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Did you, you had a question or you didn't have a question?
Oh, Ms. Rosales Medina.
I know, I thank you so much for speaking and I know you have. And please send them over so that we can look at them. But I do, maybe as well as for the next speakers, if you can just like, you mentioned you're a teacher. Are you a teacher for this school district, maybe another school district?
I am, yes. I'm a teacher of San Bernardino City Unified School District. This is my 20th year of teaching.
Okay, and so for future speakers as well, if you can kind of reference, and even if you don't have family in the school district or you don't have children or a teacher, maybe you can reference maybe someone that you do know, just so that way we can have a perspective of, you know, your voice. Thank you.
Sure, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Okay, our next speaker is PJ Baker.
Welcome, Ms. Baker.
Hello, thank you so much. I don't know where I'm going. Hi, thank you so much for hearing me tonight. And I forgot my, my, my list of things that I wanted to talk about. So it's kind of off the cuff, so just go with it, people. And I am a teacher here in San Bernardino. I've been here 20-plus years. I'm not sure how many over 20, but I know it's more than 20. I am not an anti-vaxxer. However, I, I cannot vax. I have severe anaphylaxis. I not only have severe anaphylaxis, I've got two kids in my class that also have severe anaphylaxis. And this is something that really, really needs to be discussed. Because Anna, as you know, if you have gotten the vaccine, you have to sign that you have never, ever had an anaphylactic reaction. Well, I can tell you right now, my daughter, God bless her, she is 26 and she travels like a maniac. And she said, Mom, all you have to do is just go in and have an anaphylactic reaction and then they'll tell you that you don't have to have any more boosters or whatever. And if you've ever had an anaphylactic reaction, one of the things that you'll know is that you never, ever want to have an anaphylactic reaction again. When your throat closes up, they do not ever know if they're going to be able to open that up again. And so my, my giant fear is, and I'm not afraid of much, just this. So me not taking the vaccine is definitely a choice, but it's a life-changing choice. And every, I did a lot of my conferences. I'm a kindergarten teacher, I teach at Fairfax. And my, I did a lot of my conferences in person. And a lot of, and I asked all the parents, okay, I want to ask you, how, how do you feel about this mandate? And not one person said they were going to get their kid vaccinated. They said absolutely not. So I need, I hope that you really, really, really think about how this will affect our population. People do not want it, they want a choice and they want to know that their kids are going to be safe. And you know, one of the things, I come from really good stock. My mother was a teacher at Belvedere for, I don't know, a bazillion years. My aunt was a teacher at Burbank for a bazillion years. My cousin, she's a distant cousin. She was a superintendent in South Orange County. Her name is Suzette Lovely. Some of you may know her because she, you know, I know. And I'm telling you, I come from good stuff and there is not one person that is not, that is okay with a forced vaccine. A mandate is not a law, it is a mandate. And one of the things, you know, I decided, I thought, well, I guess I will, because I wasn't sure how you guys were doing. By the way, I want to, I really do appreciate being able to teach with the testing, thank you. But one thing I wanted to tell you is, you know, I've given 20-plus years to our schools and I loved my job. There have been times that I haven't loved it so much, but for the majority, I have absolutely loved my job and I've absolutely loved my school and my community. And one of the most interesting things is, I thought, okay, I will check in on retirement. Well, if I retire, I will make 40% of my income and then they're going to tax me on that. So I'll be leaving here with a buck 75 if I retire. So there are, I'm just really praying that you're very mindful of people like me who absolutely cannot have a vaccination. And I hope that you're mindful of, there are so many kids with so many food allergies and I'm sure that you know this is something, and they will not be able to vaccinate either. So please, please be very mindful of that. And I just want to thank you again for being mindful of my livelihood and my freedoms. And thank you so much. I'm very proud to work for San Bernardino.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Mrs. Negretti.
Welcome, Ms. Negretti.
Good evening, board. Before I start with what I want to share, I just want to make sure that since you have discussed that you do have a conversation with the legislators, the same way that you said, well, we didn't do what other districts did. You didn't jump right into putting a mandate. Other districts have already made a decision that says, we're not going to mandate. We're not going to wait until make that decision in coming July. We're going to make that decision now, which is what I thought this was agendized for, to make a decision now and not try to delay this until later. Did you want to?
And for me, that's a easy, it's easy for me to give you, give you an answer. By our reaction, you can tell it's not a political thing. We're not coming down on the side of one group or another.
But yours may not be.
Let me just finish. So we're dealing with the reality. Now, in normal times, whatever the state tells us to do, that's what we do. And that's the way we hope to continue. But I can guarantee this, the teacher that got up stated clearly what her medical condition was. If she were to come to us and say that something happened at the state level that, that's going to force her and tell her that she can't get an exemption, then the board would do a resolution saying, you guys are crazy for saying that a person would have to risk their life. I would like to think that at the state level, they, they're more sensible than that. And so far, they have been. Because we haven't been forced to tell this teacher that she has to take the vaccine in order to work here or for those kids. So I, and I really do trust that, that, because I've read online, there is a medical exemption, there's a personal exemption. I heard the governor say two days ago on TV and they were talking about the LA Unified, LA Unified decisions. And he said, I'm going to lean towards personal exemptions. So as long as we're in, in, in compliance with the state, that's even better. So we hope to continue that way.
Okay, but I still stand firm that I believe there should be a decision, a solid decision made tonight and not just push it back. Because this almost seems like we're going to be lingering on. And again, and I thank you that, you know, you jumped into this one and put it on the agenda because my concern was some of these people are going to wait until reelection. So come in July, you know, when they're getting closer to campaigning, is this something that we're going to look at? And we're going to get lingered on again, has parents or, you know, any of our, any of the staff. Well, and I'll, and that's where I stand on that one. But I do want to share with you, from an expert, and hold on, just before, so I don't forget. You were quick Medina to ask, you know, one of the speakers, are, do they have a family member, do they live here? But not once have you questioned the mom from that doctor that likes to call in. It's like every single time, and I don't know whether he's getting paid or not, I haven't looked into it. But he has called, you have other people that like to call in. Floris has been very supportive of anonymous phone calls. Nobody questions them, so we don't know whether they live here or not. And I just don't see why someone who's coming and being supportive of freedom of choice is now being questioned about whether or not they have someone here. You made it specific, you haven't done it before, so why now? I'll move forward with what I want to share though. But I do want to share from Dr. Paula Alexander, who is an esteemed epidemiologist and a recognized global expert on COVID. I want to share with you two of his clips because of course, we know that real doctors are not easily available.
There has been no evidence in the past and no evidence today as we sit here that shows that children are at any increased risk for this virus to the extent that you can keep schools closed or that you can impose this vaccine on them. These vaccines are risky, no benefit, absolutely no opportunity for benefit and only the potential for harm. And I am one of them, I'll be arguing, no child should get these vaccines under no condition. No one, no CDC official, not Rochelle Walensky, not Fauci from NIAID, not Francis Polis from NIH, no one, no television, medical.
Can you hear him? I'm just, I see some concern there. Can you hear him?
It was a little bit hard for me, Ms. Negretti, but I'm also hard of hearing, so.
Okay.
So it's not your fault.
I'll play you the next one.
You could bring a suboptimal vaccine that could cause a lot of problems, particularly children, kill them. So the question is, in this particular case, when we know the data shows that the risk of survival in children is almost 100%, why bring a vaccine that is presently showing us that it is failing in adults, older persons? Why bring it to children? Why? I mean, I, I can see no, no, there's no credible reason. And I'll end by saying this. I tell it, I did a study and it's published in Journal of American Medical Association. And they looked at the ACE2 receptors in the nostrils of persons. And they found that the ACE2 receptors receptive of the virus uses to interact and infect the cell, to gain attitude to your, to your cell and hijack the metabolic machinery of your cell. They found that in the nostrils of children, the ACE2 receptor is, has limited expression.
I hope you caught most of it and it's just about not vaccinating and that there is really no benefit. But I'll close with this, and you know, we were, I don't know whether I have the time or not, but I'll close with this. If your political affiliation is what motivates your decisions, you no longer represent the children nor the families that you were elected to. So you should probably no longer hold a seat on this board.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti. Oh, we, I'm sorry, we do have a couple of comments and they may be our clarifying questions, excuse me. We'll start with Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina and then Dr. Floris.
Oh, yes, thank you for your presentation. And I just wanted to clarify for those, you don't have to mention it, it was just for me personally. And, and, and since we are in the environment of, you know, as agendized, it's just easier for me to ask, but you don't have to. So for those that come up, you don't have to. It helps for me personally, just so I can, because you're a teacher, it kind of makes a more direct connection. But you don't have to, it was just more of a suggestion.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, Dr. Floris.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti. I just want to clarify for you that Dr. Leonardo went through our school system and graduated from a Royal High. And he is a homegrown and his mother has been a teacher in San Bernardino Unified for over 25 years.
What is his concern now? I mean, it was the same concern with her, you know, what is her, why is she here talking? So does he have any children here? Does he still live here?
I can't respond to that.
But no one asked him that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Floris, thank you. Again, Ms. Negretti.
Our last in-person speaker is Kelly Bessel.
Welcome, Ms. Bessel. Thank you for being patient.
Know the feeling.
Don't assume that.
Well, you did a pretty good job.
I'm here though, thank you. Well, this is going out the door. Because you guys have, have helped me feel a lot better than I was this evening, okay? I, I have, I have a couple of things. And Andrea Schindler has not given me permission to say this, but I just want you to understand the caliber of people that are coming here tonight. Andrea started working years ago with Chris Biffle. And when he established the Whole Brain Teaching, she took his concepts to kindergarten and established the Whole Brain Teaching for the whole kindergarten through, I don't know, up through third grade. She goes around and does national conferences in the Whole Brain Teaching. She's a phenomenal, phenomenal teacher. And it is an absolute act of God's mercy and favor on me that I get to teach in the classroom right next to her and that she's my partner teacher. So she comes up here and she's like, oh, I'm so nervous. And I'm like, girl, they don't even know who you are. She's a phenomenal thinker, she's a phenomenal person. And so that's just my shout out for her because, you know, I just, I just felt like I wanted you people to know. I also want you to know that I also have anaphylaxis and I don't want to take the vaccine because of that. It's just not good. There are so many reasons. I don't know what it's going to do to my body. And the fact that I have that fear means that I absolutely should have that choice. And right now, I'm my own sole support. I'm also supporting my daughter and her husband and the two kids. And life would be absolutely devastating if I had to lose my income because of a mandate that is, that I feel is bullying me. You know, this is an anti-bullying district. We don't like bullies here. But when this kind of a thing happens and it forces me into this cataclysmic decision of, well, I got to keep my job or I got to risk my health, that should never, ever, ever happen. And I'm grateful and I'm enheartened to hear that same idea coming out of you because you're my employers. And if I can't go to you with my concerns about my job, then I, I have no place else to go, you know? I know that you guys don't hold my future. I know that the Lord holds my future and he knows what it is. But I don't always know what it is and it puts me in a scary position, you know? So I'm grateful, thank you for making hope happen here tonight with this one. I'm grateful. I don't, like you, I don't know what is going to be happening in my future, but I know who holds my future. And I trust and believe with my whole heart that those of you who are believers on this are going to press into the very presence of God and hear from him. I don't know the difference between a law and a mandate and it's my understanding that a mandate is not a law unless it's under certain conditions. Probably a little clarification from that would be helpful. But I'm 60 years old. I didn't even become a teacher until I was already midlife. You know, it was my midlife crisis, I decided to become a teacher. So I don't have anywhere to go from here. I don't have anywhere to go from here. I don't have anywhere I want to go from here. I love my students. I love my school. I love my co-teacher. And I'm very grateful to be here. I'm very grateful to hear these kinds of comments coming from this board. And I will now just continue to look to the hills from, for where my hope comes from. Because I'm going to trust that the same God who guides me is the same God who's going to guide you. And we'll go through this together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bessel. Thank you for your service to our students and district as well. All righty, Ms., oh, do we have a?
And now we're going to the virtual comments. I will call Dr. Leonardo, if he's available, please. If he's available, please unmute.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to speak to the board and everybody else. Yeah, so my background, I'm from San Bernardino City. I went to Ramona Alessandra, then Richardson, then Arroyo Valley. And part of the reason I speak with you guys was because, you know, I, I feel like I, I know a little bit about the virus and I know a little bit about immunology because I went on, because I got the San Bernardino City Unified School District Scholarship that you guys had, and I was able to go to Johns Hopkins with that. And, you know, and then from there, I got another degree at Hopkins, and then I went on and did a PhD. And then, you know, and now I'm doing a public health degree. So I, you know, and I always wanted, you know, to help out San Bernardino. But I, my allegiance is not towards any vaccine or any pill or anything. It's, it's towards the people in the school district. So I tell you guys how it is. My opinion is that, yeah, you know, people are getting the vaccine. They're also getting infected. The vaccine isn't perfect, and it's, you know, at this point, in my opinion, people are going to need things like masks and cleaning the air. And last time I spoke with you guys, I said this was not going to end, and it was going to come back every year, and it was just going to keep hammering us. And part of that is because it's a coronavirus, and coronaviruses are known to do this sort of thing and infect and reinfect. So, so people are comparing it to chickenpox. Well, with chickenpox, you get it once, and then you don't really get it again unless you get shingles. With the common cold and coronaviruses, you can get them every year. You can get them quite frequently. And unfortunately, this is a coronavirus, and it's a, it's a pretty bad one. So I told you guys it was going to get worse and things were going to change, and it would come back. And now we have Omicron. And I mentioned to you guys that we were going to end up having to take pills or something for this because it's going to escape the vaccines. And now it's true. It's part of the, part of the strategy is now to try to find pills that are going to deal with this. So I leave you all with the hope that we do something about this in terms of cleaning the air and having, having ways that people don't catch it, like maybe wearing masks for the, for the people that can to get a booster because even though it's mutated a lot to escape the vaccines a lot, a booster will work for some period of time in, after you get it. So I really hope that you guys stay safe and have a good holiday. And I hope that, you know, because of what I've shared with you about the problems that this virus can cause, especially in the brain, that you try not to catch it or, and try not to catch it the second time because Omicron now doesn't, it doesn't really care if you've had it once before because it's changed, it's evolved. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Leonardo. Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, Melissa Renee, if you're available, please unmute.
Welcome, Ms. Renee, if you're here.
Hi, yes, I'm here. Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, yeah, so my speech has definitely changed a little bit, too. And first off, I guess I really do want to thank you for the peace of mind and for sharing your thoughts and also for your transparency because it was extremely refreshing. And I guess I should introduce myself. So I've spoken before the board before. I'm a mother of three within the district. I have a kindergartner, I have a fifth grader, and then I have an eighth grader. And so, you know, my concern is that, you know, I was really researching homeschooling options and figuring out how I was going to pull them out because there's absolutely no way I'm vaccinating my children. And so, of course, I was extremely, extremely motivated to come before the board and, and talk to you guys, and it's, it's given me a lot of peace of mind. And really frankly, you know, just really kind of shed some light on, on your home lives. You know, you guys are real people, you have real concerns, you have family members that are not vaccinated, and you're definitely right. The perception is, when we see you guys up there, sometimes it might seem a little bit like we just don't know what you're thinking. We have no idea if, if you guys are sympathetic or not. And so, you know, I, I really want to thank you for the peace of mind. But I do want to share some information. So something I've recently read is that the CDC actually just announced that 80% of Omicron variant patients are vaccinated. And that's something that I had from the CDC website. So I know Dr. Leonardo was just commenting on that, so I thought I would throw that in there. But, you know, I, I definitely want to share some information with you guys as far as information that you guys can actually look at for yourselves because I think one of the bigger issues is that we talk a lot, and there's really no way for you guys to verify what anyone's talking about. But there is a website, if you guys want to either open your phones or write this down, where you can go to and you can actually research. There's a ton of data on this website. It's called www-doctorsandscientistsdeclaration.org. And the site is a consensus and a declaration signed by physicians and medical scientists. And it's like medical studies, it's data, and it's evidence showing that healthy children should not be subject to forced vaccination. It's all evidence-based, and they've come to several conclusions. And, you know, the first is that the danger from COVID is negligible. Children are not really at risk for COVID. They're not an at-risk group. Long-term safety of the current COVID vaccines in children cannot be determined. Children risk severe adverse events from receiving the vaccine, including permanent physical damage to the heart, brain, immune, and reproductive systems. And then healthy, unvaccinated children are critical to achieving herd immunity due to natural immunity being the most protective and longest-lasting solution against the disease. So I would ask that you guys would consider visiting this website and researching these points for yourselves because this is a lot of where we're getting the information. These doctors make a lot of the same points that you hear us talking about. And you guys deserve to be able to read that for yourself and be able to research. And then next, I'd like to say that there are several questions that I would really want to ask you guys to ask Newsom and your legislators. And I know that these are unprecedented times, but you guys are not alone. We stand with you, and I appreciate you guys standing with us, probably more than you know. But I'd like to go over several questions because I really, I, I really liked what she said about going to the legislators. I think that's really smart. I do think that the tide is turning. Newsom did just make a statement advising LAUSD to accommodate the 35,000 unvaccinated students, and that's very hopeful. But I do think that we have to make a strong push. And one of the questions is, why is there such a strong push to mandate vaccines for schoolchildren when they are not the at-risk group? And when the governor is advocating against mandates for other groups, such as corrections officers? And I think it's a little funny that a union of corrections officers, he's in court trying to argue that they shouldn't be vaccinated, but he's trying to vaccinate my five-year-old. I have a real problem with that. So another question would be, as respiratory viruses become less virulent over time, isn't a mandate a permanent measure for a temporary problem? And I would also want to ask, what are the numbers supporting the need for a mandate for schools and for school-aged children? And how do these numbers compare to other groups? And so these are just a few of the questions that I would have. I know that it's been right around 800 children that have passed away from COVID, which is a tragedy, but that's since the beginning of COVID out of 73 million, which is about like 0.0003%. I mean, your kids have a greater chance of being struck by lightning. They face greater danger getting into their car every day. It, it just, it simply does not make sense. And so I guess I would want to end it with this. We're just, we're asking that you guys support a resolution opposing the mandate. But, you know, we're also asking that you pressure Newsom and the state of California to make the vaccine a recommendation and not a requirement. So thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you again for joining us.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Veronica Soriano. If you're available, please unmute now.
Welcome, Ms. Soriano.
Thank you. Actually, I did have a lot to talk about, and I wrote it down, and I wanted to read it, but it's mostly what I've been hearing from you guys and what Melissa said. I read studies that, from doctors and physicians, even my doctor, when the pandemic started, suggested not to worry about the virus that is eventually going to go on its way on its own. And she suggested it just to keep my children healthy, active, eating healthy. And honestly, she said, I have nothing to worry about. And that was in the beginning of the pandemic before, that was like two years ago. And I have three children, and I am, I do have my kids here in the district also. I also have a father that he's battling bone cancer, and he's also under dialysis treatment. And when the chemo gives, sorry, when the chemo gives him, takes a toll in his body, he chooses, he has the right to choose the day that he wants to take the dialysis treatment. And nobody's forcing him to take, to take it forcefully because, you know, they're worried about his health. So why is it that are we, we have to have that kind of mandate for our children that are completely healthy and not in need of any medication? When my father, that is battling bone cancer and going through dialysis, he has the right to choose the treatment when he feels good or not. So that's the question, that's the question that I keep playing in my head. Why is it, if they are very concerned about our health, why are they allowing a sick man to, in that level of his sickness that he has? Why is he, why does he, he have that right to say, yes, I want this treatment? Or no, I don't want it? And we don't get to choose that. I'm not upset, I'm just nervous, you know? But that question keeps playing in my head nonstop because my father is very ill. He has bone cancer, he has dialysis. I mean, he can't even drink more than 32 ounces of liquid. And if he goes without treatment, one day, two days, he starts having complications. But yet, they let him choose the treatment if he wants it or not. They're not forcing it for him because they're worried about his health issues. But us, with healthy children, they want to force something that we don't even know what is made out of, what, what are they made out of? And what are the long-term consequences that my children might have to face for taking a vaccine that is new? So thank you so much for you guys sharing your testimonies, and I feel so much at peace knowing that you guys are there and you guys are giving us, you're, you're supporting us in our doubts that we have against this COVID vaccine mandate. I appreciate that, and thank you for hearing me out. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Ms. Soriano, again.
Our next speaker is Veronica Saez. If you're available, please unmute.
COVID vaccine mandate.
Welcome, Ms. Saez.
Not so much.
Hello, Ms. Saez, you're, you're on.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much for allowing me to speak again tonight with you guys. I couldn't make it, I'm a bit ill, but I felt it was important to be here, at least zooming in. I would just like to read something to you guys really quick regarding informed consent. Informed consent is the ability to have access to all information without coercion or censorship and the freedom to make the best choice for you. Not the choice for your, not the choice your employer wants, not the choice your doctor desires, not the choice your neighbors make. Your choice, the one you will have to live with at the end of the day. Weighing the risks benefit for your individual health history home should not be controversial. It should be championed. Being mindful and taking time to make big decisions is a good thing. Considering all options and possibilities in an outcome is a good thing. Having a voice over what's done to your body and the ability to consent without another's say is a good thing. Informed consent and the conclusions we each come to is a diverse, is as diverse as we all are. It has nothing to do with politics or ideals. It's a basic right for all. Having the ability to make an informed decision for myself should not be a threat to you. So why are, are we, why we are being led to fight about this? I just, I'd also like to say, in listening to what everybody's been talking about, I too, I'm not anti-vaccine. My children have all been vaccinated for every, every single vaccine that has, you know, been needed since they were kids, since they were babies. I'm not comfortable giving them the COVID vaccine. I pulled my kids from, from school. We are currently homeschooling, and I know plenty, plenty of families that are looking at the same avenue. I myself belong to a community where we are building homeschool pods, and it's actually, our community is growing very rapidly. You would be surprised. I would also like to comment on how I understand that the vaccine mandate is not in place as of now. And Governor Newsom did make a comment about the PBE, the personal belief exemption, how he would keep it. However, there has been several, several times where they have been wanting to get rid of it. It's in legislation, so I don't trust it. Also, just last year, he was saying, he made, he was, he was giving a statement to Fox 11 in LA, talking about how he wouldn't do any mandates. There'd be no restrictions on businesses, large or small. And he went back on his word because here we are tomorrow, being muzzled again. So I don't trust his word. I don't think any of us should. I think he has proven himself that the pandemic is over by going to Cabo, Cabo with his family for vacation, going on book tours and stuff. So in reality, I don't, I, I don't trust Governor Newsom, and I wouldn't take him at his word. Also, if you look in the legislature, there are several bills coming down the pipe for the state which will require every single person eligible for a vaccine to present a vaccine passport. So just ask the legislation that. Also, I just want to emphasize how important it is to just give us the freedom to choose for our children. Give us the freedom to choose for our children. Give the staff the freedom to choose for themselves what's right for them. I understand that it is not, you guys aren't pushing it as other, other districts have been. However, there's several different districts also who have passed resolutions already against the mandate. So all I would ask is that you guys do the same. If you guys are sitting here saying that you guys are for choice and are willing to give everybody the choice, then I suggest that you guys do, pass a resolution. Put it on, put it on the agenda for the next meeting and take a vote on it. You know, put your money where your mouth is. You're saying you support us, you support our choice, then prove it. Prove it. Do it, support us, we will support you. And if you are going to have the opportunity to speak to the legislator, which you do, as you say, every Monday, let, let us be involved. I mean, call a meeting for us, if that's really what you want to do, let us be heard. I personally have gone to Sacramento myself, and I'd be willing to come and speak to them and ask them things that you guys are not comfortable asking. But again, we will support you so long as you support us, and that's all we ask. That you support us, you give us a choice. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Saez, appreciate it.
Okay, and our last speaker is Andrea Calderon. If you're available, please unmute.
Welcome, Ms. Calderon. Hello, can you hear us, Ms. Calderon?
I can hear you.
Okay, welcome.
Can you hear? Okay, great. Uh, my name is Andrea Calderon. Um, I am a parent of two children here in San Bernardino School District, uh, long-term resident and the supporter of the district. Uh, I have one child that has been moved into kindergarten and another that's in sixth grade. Uh, I'm speaking today to voice my support for um, a resolution opposing the mandate, the mandate on the vaccination. Um, I've heard a lot of positive things tonight, um, a lot of uh, um, pros with um, you know, opposing the mandate. And um, I like what I'm hearing, though, uh, you know, I won't be happy until I hear the final law pass. But um, unfortunately, with the information that we're um being restricted in mainstream media and social media, um, many people assume the vaccinations are safe for our children. I myself do not want my children to be um a subject of experiment. This vaccination has not been in the system long enough. The 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 virus itself is a moving target. Um, I'm not gonna have my children be pumped with these chemicals just for a new, uh, a new version of the virus to appear and then need an additional. So, I'm gonna be sure on this one. I just, um, I support the, the opposition of mandates. Um, listening to a lot of my neighbors here um in support of, you know, their belief and uh, as it's, it's just, um, it's just our right as parents to be able to choose what we want for our children. Again, the children are a small, a very minute um population at risk here. So, um, I appreciate you guys um listening to all of us and allowing us to voice our opinions as, as um, as uh parents and citizens.
All righty. Thank you, Ms. Calderon. We appreciate your comments.
And that's all, public comments.
All righty. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. And um, any closing comments on this from our board before we move on to next agenda item? Ms. Rosales Medina?
I just wanted to mention, I I do appreciate everyone that came um to speak. And I, and I th, I truly believe that personal stories of something that is going in through your life that helps us get a bigger picture of what really is going on. So I do wanna thank everyone. I know it's late and and but I felt like it was really important for me to listen as well and um, and to hear directly from you. So thank you so much for that.
Ms. Rosales Medina, Dr. Flores?
Yes, I, I wanna thank Mr. Tillman for agendizing this. And it was important to begin the conversation and to hear from everyone, the board and our, and our constituents, our, you know, our, not constituents, but you know, our, our friends and people and teachers and parents. Uh, it's really important that we hear your voices. And that you also know our positions.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Dr. Flores, Mr. Tillman.
And, you know, um, I think in the past, on this board, uh, and I, when, when um, Mr. Urban first came to the district, I told Mr. Urban that our district staff is great at um filling the sentiment of the board and writing resolutions. And now, I do wanna be clear, resolutions from district to district are different. Some resolution, in some districts, resolutions actually become policy or law. In our district, a resolution is just a statement of support one way or another. So I, I, I think that we could word a resolution in support of parents and parents, parents and employees that have concerns about the vaccine, and stating that we're gonna lean towards giving people as much choice as possible. Um, a, and that, uh, just as we have. And I think it's important only because a lot of times, uh, we get accused of being monsters. And, and I'm not a monster. I can't speak for everybody else. But I can tell you, I'm not a monster. And when we were going through this, this, uh, the COVID, uh, I remember getting an email from a parent that said, you guys are part of this uh conspiracy, you're never gonna open the schools, and you don't wanna have the kids back on site, and it's not gonna happen, and we're gonna get rid of everybody. And my mind was never there. My mind was always to provide the protection. Once we got the protection, bring the kids back as soon as possible. Because I knew that our kids were suffering by not being on site, right? So I think it's important we can have these conversations. So I think we should, um, uh, I'm looking for consensus. I can't do it on my own. But just to write a resolution in support of, and I, and I think, I think something I really brought it home tonight was the lady that talked about the illness. And I, I have to believe that um, there's always gonna be consideration for something that drastic. But you can believe, this board has enough compassion where we felt like someone's life was in danger, we're gonna support those people. So I think we can write a resolution, take a shot at it, bring it back to the board for the first reading, and uh just to voice the, and express the support that we talked about tonight.
And Dr. Daddy Rogers?
And as I mentioned earlier, in that same conversation, they had some samplings. And I think it is important because in that case, they were up against the same thing as us. Are we o- overstepping or disagreeing with the law? Or are we more in a supportive role? So I know we have the, um, we have a, a couple of templates, but that letter also, like I said, I would like for superintendent for you all to see that. And maybe some of that verbiage can go into, into it. Because that's exactly what they were saying. But again, it was important to talk to the legislators because right now, it's conversations that are happening locally. And all of a sudden, we forgot what our job really is to do, is to continue to legislate on it. But that documentation, I think we could look at and see what it's saying. But again, being very transparent and saying that we're not trying to go up against, you know, when it comes to it, because it's attached to funding and some other things that we can create issues about. But we wanna just cautious and, and look at what is making a statement for our community and what we're standing on that, that, that choice. So thank you.
All righty. Thank you, uh, Dr. Rogers. And so, um, we need to know if we have consensus moving forward with that. So I'm gonna look for verbal consent. Ms. Sevales?
Yes, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Ms. Tillman, yes. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Sabagou? Dr. Rogers? And myself, yes, as well. All right, board. Thank you for that engaging conversation. And um, thank you to our public and our, our community members and our teachers that are out there that have uh been here tonight and staying late with us. We do appreciate your voice and everything you do for our kids as well. Thank you. All righty, we will move on now to nine point one, um, public hearing on resolution to award California Environmental Quality Act. And uh, after open the hearing on that? Or, all right, well, open the hearing? And we have quite a bit of information in there. And I'm not sure who's presenting on that, but. All right, is there any public comment on that?
There are no public comments for this.
All right. Dr. Daddy Rogers, a joke, huh?
Be it resolved is in there.
All right. Let me put my glasses on. Maybe that will help.
All the way in the bottom.
All the way at the bottom. Even better. Thank you. And I appreciate the, the support there. Be it resolved, the Board of Education does make certain required written findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the sports facilities lining at six high schools project, SEH number two oh two one one zero zero two zero zero, approving a proposed project and delegating authority to execute a notion of determination.
Moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Tillman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries, and we will close the public hearing. Do we have to reopen?
Yep.
All right, we'll continue on with our reports by our union organizations. Um, we'll start with ten point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association. All right, no comment. Uh, no report. All right, ten point two, California School Employees Association. We do have a report? All righty.
Yes. Hello, good evening.
Welcome.
Hello, sorry. Uh, good evening, uh, board members, Dr. Wyatt, and Superintendent and all, and all the cabinet present. Uh, my name is Mrs. Dani Garcia, and I'm the CSA Secretary and um CSA one eighty-three, and I'm also the Secretary for Personal Commission Office. I would like to take this time to thank you for all, for everything that you've been doing for our students, our classified and certificate employees. Um, everything that's benefiting, um, everything that you're doing is in excellence and you need to benefit our district and employees and students. I wanna wish you all a very happy, enjoyable holiday season with your families and your loved ones. And uh, we look forward to working with you with the district. I'm not coming items for the twenty twenty-two school year or next year. So thank you and, and thank you for your time. And have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And thank you for being patient with this.
Thank you.
All righty, ten point three, Communication Workers of America. All right, no report. Ten point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. All right, no report. Moving on to eleven point O, Reports and Presentations, eleven point one, First Period Interim Financial Report.
Good evening, board. Um, we, last week during the board's budget study session, we covered a lot of information over a two and a half hour period. And so we thought we'd provide the board with some relief this evening and not go through the uh presentation, which uh much of the information was contained last week. However, we did wanna bring back um one piece of information um at Board Member Tillman's request as it relates to the state fiscal outlook and the potential uh estimated impacts to our district. And so I'm just taking us to this slide, um, which provides an overview based on the Legislative Analyst Office projection for the two thousand twenty-three, two twenty-three budget. Um, and as a result um of the thirty-one billion dollar budget surplus, uh, we are expected beyond the cost of living of five point three five projected at this time to receive an additional ongoing funding of nine point five billion dollars. Um, and the estimated amount that, or potential amount to our district would be between forty-seven point five million and sixty-six point five million. So, um, if that's allocated on a per pupil basis, um, we take that by taking our percentage of our enrollment as a percent of the state enrollment. And then additionally, for the um one-time funding, um, of ten point two billion, that could yield a potential of fifty-one million to seventy-nine point six million, again, if it's allocated on a per pupil basis to us. Um, and then just briefly, um, it is important for the note that while these are estimates, the ultimate methodology that is determined for distributing these funds is determined by the governor and the legislature. Okay? And that's all for the first interim report. There will be an action item, a separate action item for the board to take action on the first interim report this evening.
All right, looks like, uh, Mr. Tillman.
Questions for, um, Mr. Sol. The first question, um, does this money include, proposed money, does it include the funding if they are gonna ask us to do the pre-kindergarten?
So, great question. Um, so, um, part of the Legislative Analyst, Analyst Report, our Governor Newsom during this um current year budget, he launched several initiatives such as the Universal TK that in this budget, um, this current budget cycle are underfunded. And so part of that ongoing dollars could potentially be used to fund um the TK, a Universal TK program.
And then, I, I, just so I'm clear, if you turn to page eight, because this can get confusing sometime. When you talk about the um, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two adopted uh budget, where we started, and you say recognizes a forty million dollar structural deficit projected to increase over the next three years, when you say that, you're not taking into account the proposed new money?
That is correct. As a first interim, we are only um allowed to um go on the best-known information now, and the governor has not proposed his budget.
And I wanna make that clear because it can be confusing if we read the other slide about the new money coming and not realize that um legally and structurally, you have to just deal with it from the perspective of what's in front of us now.
Absolutely.
And then the, the second interim comes out when?
Second interim, um, this will be, so the actual second interim budget periods begins uh January thirty-first, but it would come to the board in March. Um, so we take about a month to process and prepare the second interim.
And um, uh, I think it's safe to say that we'll know more about, um, and the concern I have is, we know money's coming. I, I did attend the CSBA. What I heard most of them say is that they're advocating that um the money be put into the base grant without restrictions. I think I got the feeling there will be some restrictions, but it's not until that part uh is ironed out where we know for sure how the money can be spent, right?
That, that's absolutely correct.
All right. Thank you very much. I apologize. I don't know who's next. It's uh, Dr. Flores and Dr. Daddy Rogers. All right, Dr. Flores?
Yes, uh, I only have one question, Mr. Solins. When exactly will we know uh the date, if you can? I know you told us in closed session, but I would like everybody to hear it, the date that we all know that the governor um has allocated the money.
So, um, the governor will actually make his budget proposal announcement on January tenth. However, um, from the proposal, there's still a lot of details to work out. So approximately the third week of January, we should have uh more details as to the impacts to San Bernardino City.
That be prior to our January eighteenth meeting or not?
Uh, likely not. It might be later in that week.
Later in that, okay. But after our meeting then?
Yes.
And we're only having one meeting in January?
That is correct.
And that's the eighteenth, okay.
We could always do a special meeting if we had to.
We could, oh yeah. Okay, we could. Okay, thank you.
And I would just add to that, we are tentatively scheduled to present the information on the governor's budget proposal and the impacts to our district at the first uh board meeting in February.
February first?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Dr. Daddy Rogers?
Thank you. And, and my question was along the line of the restrictions, and I think that was mentioned. But do we know, have any idea what those restrictions may look like? Or when will we be able to know that?
We, we do not. Um, as Mr. Tillman uh mentioned, um, the Legislative Analyst, the, the governor launched several um programs that, um, again, were underfunded according to the Legislative Analyst Office. So there will be, the, tho, those programs will need additional funding. And so a portion, we anticipate a portion of those funds will go to continue to fund those programs, uh, Universal TK, expanded learning programs. But in terms of um what the specifics are, um, we don't have that information at this time.
I would just request that when it comes back, you know, when you are there, if you kinda spell that out for us. So then we know for sure what goes to what and what's, what's left over.
Absolutely.
All righty. Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers. Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Tillman?
Yes, President, um, why, I, I, and I do wanna say now, even now, that it's gonna be critical for us. We do know because of declining enrollment that we're overstaffed in certain areas. And for the district to operate um in the optimum, it, I think it's critical that through attrition, when those positions uh are freed up, that we don't fill them. Uh, and so that when things become leaner, we're not overstaffed. But now is the time to uh ensure that we get our budget in order and balance. And I think, but if we don't have a, a deliberate um goal of ensuring that we're in line with the number of students we have, we could have problems um quickly in the near years if we don't reduce the staffing to the levels of that match the ADA.
And I know that wasn't a question, but I'll respond. Um, absolutely, we share that sentiment. And part of the, as you'll recall, during the budget study session, there was a slide about budget stabilization. And one of those items, um, as well as on an additional slide, was the need to right-size staff due to declining enrollment.
All righty, I think that was it, Mr. Sol. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on at uh twelve point one, Board Member Comments. And I will start to our left here, Ms. Sevales.
Thank you, um.
Thank you, um, President Wyatt. Um, just a, just a couple of things. Um, just want to say thank you to the um, Caps Golf Squad for the beautiful Christmas uh, card that was left here for us. Um, a, a special shout out to Gavin, Miley, Brandon, Samantha, Lamani, Riley, and Elijah. Thank you so much. Um, also, I just want to congratulate all of the um, uh, people in schools that were recognized tonight, uh, Toronto Middle School and San Bernardino High School, as well as um, to the HR Department, as well as to um, the Special Education Department for their Golden Bell Awards. Um, and then also just thanking, again, the community for having come out and sharing um, their, you know, their thoughts and their feelings in regards to um, the vaccination mandate. Um, and uh, just, you know, continuing to reinforce that uh, we are listening um, to, to the community and um, that your comments do not fall on deaf ears. And so, I'm glad that we are moving forward with um, providing some sort of of a, a resolution or language um, to ensure that that there is some protection for people that have uh, medical conditions and, you know, so forth. So, um, I think that's pretty much it. Uh, congratulations, uh, Dr. Scott Wyatt, um, and uh, Mr. Tillman uh, for President's, uh, your President and Vice President roles. And um, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Sevales, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sevales. And I want to um, commend um, Dr. Funches for the work he's done in filling a lot of positions throughout the district that are needed. And something that I learned, um, the state has paused the requirement for uh, substitute or guest teachers in terms of C-Bass. So, you don't have to have a C-Bass in order to substitute teach. So, I think that's something that we should get the word out on and encourage people in our district, I know people with four-year degrees, that um, they should apply to be substitute teachers. Uh, I would even encourage um, members of the Board that are able to substitute teach and to get qualified. We, we probably can't get paid, but uh, we should even be willing to volunteer, and I will be. So, I'll, I'll try to get certified to uh, sub, and I'll be one time, I'll use my vacation time even to come back on, especially for a critical day. So, I think uh, Mr. Irvin, we should even reach out to the community and say, there are some times when it's critical that we need substitutes. It'd be great if we had a list of people who say, I really don't like substituting, but I'm qualified, I may be an ex-teacher. Uh, I want to, I want to do the background check, so that when you really need me, then I want to be there to provide that service. So, I don't know how we would do that, but I think it'd be a good idea for us to do, especially since uh, you don't have to pass a C-Bass on to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, uh, Dr. Flores.
Thank you, President Wyatt. Um, I just want to, before I start, I'd just like to thank the Cabinet and uh, Karen and Katrine for all the hard work that you do. Uh, it's really important, we, our agendas wouldn't be uh, what they are. I know it takes a lot and to, to do all of this. So, just want to thank you and Cabinet members. Sometimes we're hard on you, but really appreciate you uh, very, very much. Uh, want to wish you and your families uh, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, everybody, and our Board as well. All of our, our, our employees, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, our families, the kids. Um, today, I uh, bought tamales for some of the kids in a, in a high school class, and uh, they sent me a video thanking me and uh, for their hard work that they had done. So, I mean, it's, it, you know, it's, we have to bring joy to wherever we can and kindness and, and so forth. So, I just wanted to say that to begin with. Um, and I hope everybody rests, because we all look haggard and tired. We need to rest. And with that, uh, I really want us Board to agendize, um, President Wyatt and Mr. Tillman, the extension of the COVID leave for all of our employees. Uh, I think it's just and fair uh, that we have the money, the ESSER3 money. Uh, $260 million, it's not going to cost that much. But I am sure that that will support our, our employees so that they don't have to use up their sick leave and then have to pay, you know, extra. It's just, I mean, it's, I don't think it's right. I think we should support them because we have been given that federal funds to do it. So, I'm asking if we can agendize that. I would like to get consensus. So, I need that, right? Uh huh. Uh, to support our employees, yeah. So, anyway. Pardon me?
And I think, um, Dr. Flores, you're saying to agendize it if they can't do it. If they can do it, we don't have to worry about agendizing it.
I don't know how we do it. I, 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 I think we have, do we have to agendize it, Dr. Funches?
We can work with the unions to put agreements together.
Pardon me?
We can work with our union groups to put agreements together so that we can move forward on uh, what you're asking for. So, we'll come together and talk with SBTA, CSA, because it would go across both, all three major union groups.
Okay, so that would be great. Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
And then, wait, wait, I'm not done, I have two more things. Um, I saw the Friday update. Thank you, uh, Mr. Irvin, for all of that. It's really important, and it's really very informative. And I um, I did click on to get the information, and it says I have to have access. So, I, I hope that we can clear that up. But I, I just wanted to know, you don't have to tell me now. Uh, I saw that you tracked 162 students going to charter schools. I just wanted to know how you figured that out, uh, and how they uh, you know, um, exited to charter schools, how you track them. I don't need to know right now, I'm just uh, raising that question, so. Right. And then lastly, I know that Dr. Monadis, you have, always were in charge of quarterly reports on attorney fees and how much we, for all our attorneys, and uh, how much we were, had spent uh, quarterly on them. So, um, are you going to resume that? Uh, I don't know if you know that, Superintendent Irvin, uh, but we, as a Board, got quarterly updates on um, expenditures by uh, our attorneys. Okay.
Just for clarity, Dr. Flores, that was for, specific to our special ed settlements? That's what you're requesting?
No, it was for all of the attorney fees.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it wasn't for special ed. It was all the attorneys that we um, have. Uh, you always gave us a summary, a quarterly summary of the expenditures, um, or how much we paid them. Yeah.
Okay, so what I was giving prior was special ed, so you're requesting for all of them?
For all of them.
Okay, thank you.
I know that there's a contract, but we just want to know, we always requested quarterly reports. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Flores, Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina.
I just wanted to um, also uh, wish everyone a Merry Christmas. We also have Happy Kwanzaa and Happy Shaanaka as well. So, I want to, and with that, with the different cultures that we have um, within our school district, I also want to make sure that um, in addition to that, that we're looking at the demographics within our management, our teachers, principal, and classified. And if there, uh, if there can be a report created in order for us to see the demographics within the school district, I know we are increasing the amount of communities of color of employees that um, within the school district, but I do want to see it um, kind of outlined. Um, how many? And um, are we needing more in a certain area or so forth? So, just wanted to have that, if you can provide that for us. And that's it.
Ms. Rosales Medina, Dr. Daddy Rogers.
You, President Wyatt, oh, this, this, we're going to have to get these fixed over here, Ms. Rosales Medina. They got a pause going on. But anyway, uh, ditto to Happy Holidays to everyone, definitely don't want to forget that. And um, also want to say to Superintendent Irvin and the team, I know it takes a um, a, a big effort to get us out that information on the Friday updates, and we certainly appreciate that. Um, hopefully, it gives you a little bit of time after a Board Meeting to gather certain things and then give it towards the end of the week versus, you know, right away. Um, but we appreciate that. I also wanted to um, just kind of put this thought on the, on the, the Board's mind. Um, I had saw this prior, and now that I have a little bit more information, that it's, it's not a non-normal practice in, in Board Meetings, that we perhaps set a stop time um, for our Board Meetings. Um, and then there's also another part of it where if you're right in the middle of some business, that you can also exti, vote to extend 30 minutes. Um, I saw it happen at a couple of Board Meetings about a year ago, and I thought, I've never saw that before, but when we had our conference, I was able to get a little bit more dialogue that it happens more often than not. So, just to, for us to consider maybe like a 10 o'clock or something like that, because that's usually when we are, we have discovered that we get a little bit weary, and we can make that decision. Also, um, I wanted to uh, mention that some of you may have saw the Ed Source, I think it was Ed Source, one of those. They sent us a lot of information, but there is some conversation around the, the competency-based learning, and I think that's that D and F conversation. And I know a while, many moons before COVID, we did have some kind of conversation around that. Um, and even in the articles, there's some controversy back and forth. We never want to water down education, but we always want to seek ways that we can support students. And we know during the COVID time, we've all gotten different calls and what happens, you know, when they're out. So, I, I, I don't know if that is something that we have to agendize or you can bring back to us, but we do need to have a discussion on that sooner than later. And then also, in our workshop, I want to remind us that we also talked about putting future agenda items on our agenda so that we can, as we bring things up, we can have it put on there that these are the future agenda items that we want to talk about so that we don't forget what those are. And then I also would like to request um, the demographics, I think I requested this before, but the demographics on our special education, I want to look at those numbers and see where they are. And then um, we, I want to also commend the law enforcement team. I know we all probably beginning, getting texts, various schools, there's different things that are happening um, that alert and concern our parents. But I can say that each time they do call and we reach out, the investigations are already in process, or they know, or, you know, they've already been on the social media sites to, to try to bring some of that um, down. And so, we appreciate that because, you know, it is a, a scary time when you hear those type of things, what's happening across the nation, nationwide, these things are taking place. And then um, I think lastly, I just want to let the community know, we, even tonight, it happened at 8 o'clock, and I was talking to one of the council people, city council people reached out. They're still having the community Ho-Ho Parade, and it's going to be, I think, coming down Little Mountain tomorrow at 8:00 and going to Wildwood Park or something of that nature. And I, I did share with them that we would, we would share that, but it's in that evening, yeah, it's in the evening at 8:00. So, they probably had on us, on their site or something, but it is at 8:00. All right, and again, thank you all, and thank you again, um, and congratulations to uh, President Wyatt and Vice President Tillman. Thank you.
Thank you, Daddy, uh, Dr. Daddy Rogers, and Ms. Sevales. A question, I apologize if we missed you.
That's okay, I just have a clarifying question um, in regards to uh, extending the um, I don't know what, what we called it, uh, COVID, you know, benefits.
COVID leave.
Yeah, the COVID leave. Is that something that um, the Board has decided to move forward with? Because I personally would like to maybe see, although I agree with it, and I think it'd be a great, you know, thing to look into, I would like to see um, what that looks like exactly, laid out, um, as well as the financial impact that is going to have before we just, you know, move, move forward with it. Um, so I would like to see it come back to the Board.
You're agendizing that item.
And I believe Dr. Funches was going to bring us more information back on that as well.
Yeah, the next meeting in January, we'll have it agendized.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
Assuming that will include fiscal impact too.
Awesome, thank you.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Sevales. And then uh, try to make it brief, and uh, I, I absolutely agree on a, on a stop time for our Board Meetings. I just don't know why we didn't talk about that like six years ago when I first got on the Board, but, no, just kidding. Uh, because I know some of these meetings have gone very, very late, and it is our goal to try to get us out of here at a um, a reasonable time, but we're a huge district, a huge uh, organization. We have a lot of business to take care of. I remember when I first came on here and I looked at the Board Agenda, when they gave it to me in this binder, I was like, I got to read all that, you know, in like three days? And I was like, holy heck, a couple hundred pages, but, you know, there, there's a tremendous amount of information that we go over that I think a lot of folks don't even know about, but uh, it, it's a wonderful responsibility for all of us too, let me just say that. But I, I'm more than open to the idea. All right, just a couple of items for me, and um, you know, as we're getting in to our year and back to somewhat sense of normalcy, you know, things that we did in the past, just getting updates on. I heard a lot of requests for updates, and, you know, one of mine's an update on how our mariachi uh, club is going. I know we talked about that some years ago, and it's got up and running prior to COVID. And then, you know, we haven't heard anything about a lot of programs. So, that was one that's been on my mind though, about, you know, is that still going? Where are we at with that? Does it need more support from us? Um, and I would be glad to give it to us. Also, um, student Board members. I don't know if we had any conversation about our student Board members. Um, we did? All right, and so we're looking at getting some. No, it's okay, I, I just wanted to, you know, bring it up because I, I needed a reminder to myself, and I know, you know, we have to respect our, our spacing, social distancing, and, you know, um, you know, practicing obviously our protective gear to all that stuff. So, I didn't know if that was part of it, but uh, would really look forward to getting our student Board members back on here. Um, went to a nice little fundraiser for the Making Hope Happen Foundation. Uh, I think Dr. Rogers was there with me, I don't know if any of our other, um, Mr. Irvin was there too, and I believe some of our Cabinet members as well, so. But the, the fun part about it was our um, teen music workshop who performed, who did obviously an amazing job as they often do, and they played all night. I, I mean, they did me, I had to go home, I was tired. But uh, a lot of dance and a lot of fun with them. Also want to say um, happy birthday to our colleague and friend, Dr. Margaret Hill, who had to leave a little bit earlier, um, you know, wasn't feeling well, but uh, we want to make sure that she's with us and say happy birthday to her and keep her in our thoughts and prayers. Um, but definitely happy birthday, Dr. Hill. Um, we really do appreciate you and thank you for that toffee. I don't know if that was you or Dr. Rogers this time, but um, always appreciate that every year, and it's almost gone. Yeah, that was, probably not going to sleep tonight, but that's okay. And just to everyone out there, you know, obviously our employees and our community, but definitely thank you to our employees. This has been a super challenging year, our Cabinet, Mr. Irvin, I know it's been a tough, challenging year for you as well.
Yeah.
And so, I know we're all looking forward to our winter break, I know I am, uh, so we could all get some rest. Please stay safe out there. You know, we had a lot of conversation today about COVID, and uh, you know, it is very real, as we all know, whether you're vaccinated or not, um, you know, it can harm you in many different ways, if not kill you. So, please stay safe out there as you go to these family gatherings and spend time with your friends and family. And uh, just enjoy the holidays, and I'd like to say just Merry Christmas to all of you as well, and uh, a Happy New Year, because it'll be a new year when we come back. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to uh, 12.2 Superintendent Staff.
I'll try to be brief. Um, first of all, um, the California Department of Ed hosted a regional online forum and uh, on the, you know, to help shape the implementation of the Community Schools Partnership Program. And Ginger Ontiveros, our Chief Communication and Community Engagement Officer, was one of the four panelists. So, I'm talking about the Community Schools Model, so that went very well. Secondly, the, tomorrow, the Helpful Honda People uh, has chosen North, North Park Elementary School to be the, the recipient of a donation, a generous donation of PE equipment. And so, this is going to be covered by the media, and uh, and so, um, we're pretty excited about that, and that'll be taking place tomorrow. Um, and then overall, you know, you know, happy holidays overall to everyone. I know, I agree, it's been a very challenging year, but we wish everybody a, a happy holiday season. Um, and as we come to the close of the first semester, I think, you know, we got a lot to be proud of, there's a lot of moving parts. Um, but um, I think overall, um, the district, even prior to my arrival and during my tenure so far, they've had some, some huge challenges, but they've met, they've met those challenges even. even before the pandemic, during the pandemic. And so that's got to be a challenge. And the good news is, I'll say it again, our teachers are strong. Been gender, I think, almost 400 classroom, maybe more, maybe 500, who knows? But the teaching, the, the instruction in the classroom is solid. I've said that from, from the beginning, and I continue to support that. And very happy with those classroom visits. And I know some of you have joined me, so I encourage you to come out and walk with us. And I think the one thing is our students are learning how to succeed again in school. And so again, we, but again, the, the goal this year is to get back to some sort of normalcy. And the last thing I'll say is I do know that every single person in the district that I've encountered really do care about the kids. They really do care about what's, what's good for the district. So that's very important. And so again, I think we need to cherish our blessings and, and that's around us every day. And I hope everyone spends time with their loved ones and their family and friends during this, during, during the two, three weeks off. And we'll look forward to the next year, and we'll hit it head on once again. We'll get right back at it. And so, and I really appreciate the cabinet. I know that they've been hanging in there with us. It's been a lot going on, but I really appreciate their support. And I think, oh, onboarding. I want to remind Rebecca Casada, right? Casada? Right. She's actually the Elementary School Vice Principal at Lincoln Elementary School. She's not here. But we still want to recognize her as a new employee and make sure that she gets the recognition she deserves. So once again, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Irvin. We appreciate that. Moving on to action items, 13.1, Approval of the Director of College and Career Success Job Description.
Moved.
All right, you guys are fast. Mr. Tillman, Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina. So we have a motion to approve, second. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries, 13.2, Approval of the Human Resource Director Classified Job Description.
Moved.
Moved.
All righty, Ms. Rosales Medina moved, and then seconded by Mr. Tillman. Any discussion?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Tillman.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
I want to make sure that's clear to the public, because when we had the, a meeting, a couple of meetings ago, I had a real concern about the position. At that time, our budget outlook was totally different. So the real concern was ensuring that we didn't add additional positions, especially administrative positions, because the, an ongoing cost, because the budget was so dire at the time. And it's just reality that three or four weeks makes a huge difference. And we went to San Diego, and the information coming out of the state is that overnight, we are going to receive tens of millions of dollars, if not hundreds of millions of dollars, that weren't expected. And some of that money is going to be ongoing money. So a position like this, that's needed, is also needed, but now we can afford it. So I just want to make sure you, that the public understand that's the reason why I've changed and will to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Any other discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries, 13.3, Approval of the STEAM Director Job Description.
Moved.
Second.
All right, been moved by Mr. Tillman, seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion? Maybe there's a delay on Dr. Rogers over there.
We blended.
We'll have to speed up that, that mic for you now that you're over there, Dr. Rogers and not Mr. Tillman, as I said earlier. So we'll take care of that. All right, seconded by Dr. Rogers. Any discussion?
Yes.
Discussion, Dr. Flores.
I just want to say that I really am happy about this, because the arts are really important. The visual and performing arts are important in our children's growth and joy and so forth. And this board has always supported the arts. And now hopefully, with this new money, we can even support it even more, because we never got rid of, of performing arts, our music, we always kept it. We had to back off a little bit with our visual arts, but it's so important for our children. And I'm glad that we're going to move in that direction.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And I couldn't agree with you more. I happen to watch a band that I think, when I didn't mention my board comments, or that some of our ROTC students from River Valley was in during the weekend in my hometown. And I saw one of their bands, and I was like, oh, my gosh, their band is huge. And I said, that's what I want to see with our bands, too, is, you know, being gigantic. We've got plenty of students with a lot of talent. It's just we got to encourage them to get into the arts and, and enjoy them and support them. And I was like, we have the talent. I know we do. Ms. Rosales Medina?
I would also emphasize the, the fine arts piece, because I know that's one area that has always been. I mean, for me personally, as a kid, that was my, my sanity of escape with all the issues that were going around in my life during that time when I was a kid. So the arts, fine arts, is definitely something that I know we have pushed, but it wasn't necessarily significant. So if we can look at, now that we will have a new STEAM director, really look at that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Dr. Doughty Rogers?
I just want to say I'm happy that it's across the board. You know, we won't have those pockets of one part is getting in and the others. Our kids are talented. Many like science, many like technology. You know, all of these are the things that are going to help them in the future. And that's definitely what we want our students to be able to compete when they leave here, and just supporting them across the board and getting back to what we need to give them to be successful, you know, is, is a great, great effort. So I appreciate that.
Dr. Rogers, I agree. This is an exciting position, and look forward to seeing our unbelievable, talented person as we bring on board. Dr. Eskeb.
Can you hear me? Yes.
There we go.
I just want to applaud and thank you so much for your support. We are absolutely seeing STEAM to serve as a vehicle to engage kids, to excite kids, and to truly be a, a way to spark their creativity that will lead to being on grade level and being college and career ready. And so again, thank you so much for your support, and we will keep you updated along the way.
Thank you, Dr. Eskeb. All right, well, let's vote then on this great position. All right, motion carries. Let's move on, 13.4, Approval Personnel Report Number 11, dated December 14, 2021, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations. As presented.
I can't, I mean, a second?
All right, it's motion by Dr. Flores and seconded by Dr. Rogers. So any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries, 13.5, Approval of the Annual and Five-Year Reportable Fees Report for Fiscal Year 2020 through 2021. Oops. I have to read this one. Thank you. Where is it at? All right, there it is. Found it. Be resolved, the Board of Education approved the annual and five-year reportable fees report for fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
Moved.
All right, it's motion by Mr. Tillman, seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion? Very good. Let's vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 13.6, Approval of First Period End Term Final Report as of October 31, 2021.
Moved.
Second.
All right, been motion by Ms. Tillman, seconded by Dr. Rogers. Any discussion? Very good. Let's vote. Motion carries, 13.7, Approval of Career Technical Education Advisory Committee Equity Access and Innovation.
Moved.
Second.
motion by Dr. Flores, seconded by Mr. Tillman. Any discussion? Very good. Let's vote. Okay, motion carries, 13.8, Adoption of the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant Plan.
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion by Dr. Flores, seconded by Mr. Tillman. Any discussion? Let's vote. All right, motion carries, 13.9, Approval of the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, CAC Member Appointments.
Moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Abayos, seconded by Mr. Tillman. Any discussion? Very good. Let's vote. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to consent items.
Moved.
Second.
All right, we have a, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any items that are being pulled? Dr. Flores?
Yes, President Wyatt, 14.23, I have to recuse myself.
14.23?
Uh-huh, 23.
Dr. Flores, recuse. Thank you. Any others?
That's it for me.
Okay. All righty, let's go ahead and vote, as amended, with 14.23 being recused for Dr. Flores. We don't have to pull it?
No, you just have to, you have to.
When we get to 14.23, okay.
She stays there. She just doesn't.
If, if you, if you want to go by the recommendations from all the CSBA, they do say it's better to leave the room, but I'm just saying, yeah.
The full ones now.
We're voting on all of it right now besides that.
And now, yeah.
For those, remember when I was leaving the room? In the end, I was glad I did, because then it becomes clear you're not winking at nobody and looking at somebody a certain way.
All right, I think we voted on that with the exception of 14.23.
And I'll give clarity on that through the board.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All righty, we've approved the consent agenda items, and we will go ahead and go to 14.23.
Moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and probably seconded. Any discussion on 14.23? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
I didn't have time to change it, so can you just do verbal, please?
That's okay.
Thank you.
Starting with Sabios?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers?
Aye.
And myself, Scott Wyatt?
Aye.
All right, let's move on. We are moving. Somebody let Dr. Flores back on in. Ooh, we're getting there, folks. We are getting there. I can't believe it. 15.1, Staff will review items, updates as requested. Imagine, that's quite a list over there. It's on Tavero, so.
Yes, President Wyatt, I have about 12. So not too long, but hopefully I captured them all. I know you'll let me know if I missed any. So the first I got was Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina, and it was echoed by just about everyone, requested that the board would establish protocols for appointing a vice president. The, then Dr. Gwen Rogers later asked for sharing information about how stakeholders could advocate at the state level regarding the vaccine mandates, mentioning a letter that I think you got from CSBA that you wanted to share with us as a model for that. Following up on that, there was a request that we would prepare a draft resolution for the board to adopt in support of parent choice relative to the COVID-19 vaccine. Mr. Danny Tillman asked for that one. There was also consensus across the board for it. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would consider encouraging qualified people to get certified as substitute teachers, including inviting several members of the board to join him. Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we would consider extending COVID leave for employees requiring, who are required to quarantine for COVID. And the request was also made or echoed by Ms. Myra Sabios, who requested that we would bring information back to the board about the cost and, and details around that.
I also had put on there retroactive in October.
Okay.
For last October.
I will add that in there. Then Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we would, mentioned that some of the permissions on one of the documents that was attached to the Friday update didn't allow her access. So she wanted to make sure that she could get access to the report that was included. I think it had to do with charter school attendance. Dr. Barbara Flores then asked for, to resume the practice of quarterly updates on attorney's fees. Ms. Myra Sabios asked that we would report on the demographics of employees across the district by different employee groups. Dr. Gwen Rogers and also Dr. Scott Wyatt asked that we would consider setting a stop time for board meetings. Dr. Gwen Rogers requested the demographics on special education students. Dr. Scott Wyatt asked for an update on the mariachi program, as well as an update on the status of student board members. And then Dr. Barbara Flores and echoed by Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina and Dr. Gwen Rogers asked that this new STEAM director would explore how we could expand arts and fine arts programming in the district. And those were the, the requests that I captured.
Did you mention the future agenda items on there?
No.
Okay.
I might have missed that one.
Yeah. And did you also mention?
Can you, can you repeat that?
So just adding them, you know, when we have, when we bring them up, then they can be brought back on our actual board agenda.
Okay.
And then also, I mentioned the competency-based learning for us to figure out, having a discussion around that, which pertains to the Ds and Fs.
Perfect. I've got them now. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Doughty Rogers. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, I'm also in this area, the board, prior to Mr. Irvin coming, and actually prior to COVID-19, we had a list of priorities. And we had three different lists. We put a lot of work into establishing those listed priorities. I would like to see us bring those back, see which ones have been accomplished, see which ones are still outstanding, and then have the board make sure it's still the same priority. But I think it'll give clarity to the superintendent staff of what our priorities are already. And I think we should go back to establishing what our top 10 are and moving forward on completing those tasks since we were past the whole COVID thing. But I think it's a great tool that we can continue to use. So I just want to, maybe we can, I don't know if we have to do it, either do it in a regular board meeting, even if it's a special board meeting, just to get started again. Here's our priorities, and let's communicate those.
And I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Tillman, that, actually, I'd loved when we did that before. Really was a good monitoring tool, and, you know.
Different from, is that going to be different from the goals? Or are you saying, because when you say in the priorities?
We haven't really established those. Agenda items.
I, I think that Dr. Doughty Rogers is right, because, you know, goals, priorities should align, in my opinion, with the, with what we're striving to do with the district, right?
But then, then we went a little further, and we did have top 10 out of that. And then the future agenda items were kind of added as we had those discussions and broken down by department, so we know who was responsible for it. So the template is somewhere.
Karen has, Karen has templates.
Yeah, we have a template, maybe we can look at. But I, I really, I didn't know why we went away from it, but I really loved it, too, so.
All right, so Karen, I'll just, let me just get a copy from Karen and see what the board have done in the past. That, that, I could do that. Okay.
And in addition to those goals were the KPIs. That's why we kept saying we would know the key performance indicators after we established what these goals are. Then we knew the cycle of the presentations on those.
We'll be coming back to the key, the key performance indicators soon as we start the strategic planning process. But even before that, we'll, we'll be getting an idea. But I believe in January, when we come back, that's part of the process. So we'll be there. We're almost there. Just, we just need a little bit more time, and a lot of moving parts.
All righty, thank you. Any other updates or comments for Ms. Ontiveros?
Adjourned.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ontiveros. We have Mr. Tillman, who has moved to adjourn, and that's seconded by Ms. Medina, Rosales Medina, and.
No, we should have put that.
So this meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a wonderful, wonderful holiday break, winter break, and I'm sure we're all looking for that rest and God bless you all.